Good afternoon. I caused order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in this chamber that no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public will be permitted. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the road to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fernando Sanderson, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Louie Jean, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Pen, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, and Counselor Worrell.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that the quorum is present. Our clerk will be coming forward to give today's invocation, and afterwards, we will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Clerk, you now have the floor.
Good afternoon. Let's pray. Spirit of love and life which moves through us and through all the world, may we this day be grateful for the gift of life which is ours, remembering today and always that the life we have and hold is to us a mystery and precious. May we this day be reminded of the responsibilities we carry, not so that we are intimidated or overwhelmed, but so that we may be true to them, so that we may be faithful in carrying them forward. May we this day be inspired to be filled with a new breath, be filled with new enthusiasm, be ready to see fresh opportunity, new perspectives, unnoticed avenues for action and resolution. And may we this day remember those virtues that bless our lives and bless the lives of others: the virtues of caring and concern, the virtues of honesty and respect, the virtues of charity, industry, and patience. And may the members of this city council maintain a high sense of their calling. Remember that they are invested here with honor and called to a wider vision of the world, a world made more fair, more just, more equitable by their efforts. Amen.
We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have no presentations today. Mr. Clerk, would you please amend the record to reflect that Counselor Fitzgerald is now present and with us? Thank you. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of January 29, 2025. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The minutes of the January 29 meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from her Honored the Mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0393?
Docket number 0393, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $2,563,236.28 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 25 State Elder Lunch Program grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Elder Affairs to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund nutrition services for older adults in the city of Boston at a rate of $7.39 per meal or up to 358,679 meals.
Thank you. Docket number 0393 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0394?
Docket number 0394, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1,735,107.39 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 25 Senator Charles E. Shannon Jr. Community Safety Initiative Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund regional and multidisciplinary approaches to combat gang violence through coordinated prevention and intervention, law enforcement, prosecution, and reintegration programs.
Thank you. Docket number 0394 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0395?
Docket number 0395, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $800,000 in the form of a grant for the UCFC program awarded by the United States Department of Agriculture, passed through the COAS network, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund the historic workforce investment of boosting the city's tree cover in various neighborhoods.
Thank you. Docket number 0395 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice for Resiliency in Parks. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0396?
Docket number 0396, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $775,855 in the form of a grant for the 2025 Community Connections Program Grant awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, passed through the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization, to be administered by the Transportation Department. The grant will fund the replacement and electrification of Blue Bike Stations and repurpose single-space parking meter poles for 1,600 with bicycle racks.
Thank you. Docket number 0396 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0397?
Docket number 0397, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $702,244.22 in the form of a grant for the REDEA Program for Field CY24 Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund individual reemployment needs of unemployment insurance claimants as well as prevent and detect improper benefit payments and application assistance for training and education resources and programs.
Thank you. Docket number 0397 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0398?
Docket number 0398, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $626,466.57 in the form of a grant for the CARRY and WIOA Dislocated Workers Program Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund a program to help dislocated workers get back to work as quickly as possible and overcome barriers to employment.
Thank you. Docket number 0398 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency in Parks. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0400 and 0401 together? Oh, could you please read docket number...oh, could you please read docket number 0399?
Docket number 0399, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $449,710 in the form of a grant for the Boston MVP Action Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, to be administered by the Public Works Department. The grant will fund building a database and map of current and projected flooding impacts focusing primarily on stormwater and river flooding.
Thank you. Docket number 0399 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency in Parks. Mr. Clerk, would you now read docket number 0400 and 0401 together?
Docket number 0400, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $410,000 in the form of a grant for the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Funding awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Administration, Administrative, and Finance, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund to support the Center for Working Families, Boston Tax Help Coalition in assisting low-income taxpayers with personal income tax filing for the 2024 tax session. And docket number 0401, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $254,921 in the form of a grant for the WIOA Youth Activities Admin Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund a program that focuses primarily on out-of-school youth between ages 14 to 24 who face barriers to education, training, and employment.
Thank you. Dockets number 0400 and 0401 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0402?
Docket number 0402, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $115,000 in the form of a grant for the Creative Aging Program awarded by Goddard House Assisted Living to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund bringing arts program to older adults in Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy, the Chair of Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm asking that we don't place this in committee, and as the Chair of Strong Women, Families, and Communities, I urge my colleagues to support the passage of this important grant order for the Creative Aging Program. This grant is awarded by Goddard House Assisted Living and will provide $115,000 to fund art programming for older adults in Boston. Arts programming plays a crucial role in enhancing the quality of life for our senior community, promoting cognitive health, emotional well-being, and social engagement. This initiative aligns with our broader efforts to ensure that older Bostonians remain active, vibrant, and included in the cultural life of our city. The Creative Aging Program is a meaningful investment in the lives of our senior residents, offering opportunities for self-expression and connection. I encourage all my colleagues to join me in supporting this grant, as it will bring positive change to our communities and enrich the lives of our older adults. And with the small amount, I don't feel the need to hold a hearing unless people want more information on it, so I do ask your favorable vote to pass this grant today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy, and thank you for moving on this. Is that 115,000? I'm not sure if...is that a zero missing?
Yeah, there was a zero missing. It's not one...I didn't think it was one.
115,500.
Okay, 115,500, okay.
Yeah, there was a type of one zero.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Counselor Murphy, the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Communities, and Families, Suspension of the Rules and Passage of Docket Number 0402. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number...docket number 0403, 0404, and 0405 together?
Docket number 0403, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $109,271.70 in the form of a grant for the WIOA Dislocated Worker Admin Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund individualized career services and training services for dislocated workers to rejoin the workforce as early as possible and overcome barriers to employment. Docket number 0404, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $94,089 in the form of a grant for the Wagner-Pizer Admin Grant awarded by the United States Department of Labor, passed through the Mass Higher Department of Career Services, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund individual reemployment needs of unemployment insurance claimants as well as prevent and detect improper benefit payments and application assistance for training and education resources and programs. Docket number 0405, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $50,000 in the form of a grant for the Friends of Youth Opportunity Boston Grant awarded by the Post Group, to be administered by the Office of Workforce Development. The grant will fund opportunities for young people ages 12 to 24 to work and learn along with intensive support staff.
Thank you. Dockets number 0403 to 0405 will be referred to the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0406?
Docket number 0406, message in order for your approval, a homeroom petition to the General Court entitled "Petition for a Special Law in Act Relative to Certain Affordable Housing and Cultural Space in the Brighton Section of the City of Boston."
Thank you. Docket number 0406 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0407?
Docket number 0407, message in order for your approval and ordinance for road safety and accountability for delivery providers.
Thank you. Docket number 0407 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, could you please amend the record to reflect that Counselor Fernando Sanderson is now present and with us? Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0408?
Docket number 0408, message in order for your approval, an order confirming that Ringer Playground is permanently dedicated for park and playground purposes as required by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. For parks receiving or for said grant assistance, this confirmation is required to receive a grant awarded to the city of Boston through the Parks and Recreation Department for renovations to Ringer Playground located in the neighborhood of Alston and Brighton.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we'll be seeking suspension and passage on this docket. This is just to classify and ensure that Ringer Playground is included as a park so that it can be received for grant funding. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to speak...respectfully asked to speak on docket 0407.
Okay, that...let's...0408, and then I'll...we'll go back to 0407.
Thank you.
So, 0408, I know that's in Counselor Braden's district, so I'm not sure if you wanted to speak on the matter. The chair recognizes Counselor Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think this docket, 1408, is...I'd ask that we suspend and pass. The Ringer Playground is part of Ringer Park in Alston. We've had a multi-year study going on to look at the need for improvements there. It was a historic park originally designed by the Olsted Brothers, and it's much needed for renovation, so I think this is a requirement to accept state funds, so I would ask just to expedite that process and vote to accept this, suspend and pass this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Braden seeks...well, I saw...okay. We seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 0408. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Okay. Counselor Flynn, you wanted to speak on docket 0407. That docket is referred to committee, and we normally aren't...don't speak on docket. It's referred to committee. I will allow you one minute to speak on this docket that has been referred to committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last February, I raised this issue at the city council and filed a hearing order to discuss community process relating to Boston Transportation Department. At that time, I said instead of not engaging with residents in their neighborhood on street redesign with a top-down approach, I said we should listen to neighbors and address the increase in the use of mopeds and other devices from third-party delivery drivers. For the last year, I've heard from neighbors or witnessed mopeds and scooter speed through stop signs and red lights, go the wrong way on a one-way, ride on the sidewalk, navigate between vehicles at red lights, endangering pedestrians and drivers. I advocated repeatedly with the administration on the council floor, in the media, and on social media. If you go over 20 miles an hour, you should be licensed, registered, and insured. While having third-party delivery operators obtain a permit and insurance for their workers is a positive start, and we need more enforcement and ticketing of illegal vehicles' operations to deter bad behavior in the road, we should be looking at all road users to be licensed, registered, and insured to make sure everyone is playing by the same rules.
Counselor Flynn, just so you know, you are beyond the minute mark, so if you could just wrap it up so we can move on.
We know in recent years, groups of dirt bikes who have at times occupied the streets to do stunts and racing. We know electric bikes also travel faster than 25 miles an hour. We have also heard stories at civic groups or neighborhood meetings of not only mopeds, but dirt bikes, electric bikes, and yes, even regular bicycles who go through red lights, stop signs, or the wrong way. Why are we not making them get licensed and registered or carry liability insurance? In my opinion, whether it's cars, mopeds, dirt bikes, electric bikes, or bikes, everyone has to be obeying the rules of the road and to be licensed, registered, and insured.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Thank you. Thank you. The proper space for discussion will be on the committee about...for this...on this topic. Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0409 to 04...and 0410?
Docket number 0409, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of John Leighton as a trustee of the South Boston Foundation for a term expiring December 31, 2025. Docket number 0410, communication received from Counsel Aaron Flynn and Aaron Murphy and Counsel Ed Flynn on council exclusion.
The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. As this is in a communication, two minutes to speak, and we're moving on. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wasn't going to speak on this communication. I did want to file it into the record, but after someone brought to my attention that a colleague made fun of me about this communication on Twitter, I did just want to stand up and share my thoughts on it. Leadership is about showing up, listening, and doing the work. That's what I've done every day as an at-large city councilor, elected with over 43,000 votes from residents across every neighborhood in Boston. I am honest, I am committed, and I fight for the people I represent. That's why I won't stay silent when I see blatant exclusion and political gameship, whether it's being deliberately prevented from speaking at community events, ignored by city officials on critical issues, or dismissed when I try to hold the administration accountable. These aren't isolated incidents. They are part of a patent meant to silence, diminish, and discredit me, but I refuse to let that happen, not just for myself, but for every city employee, resident, and advocate who has ever been treated as invisible when they spoke up. This is not about playing the victim. It's about demanding the respect that every elected official and every resident deserves. When public servants, especially those in leadership, use their positions to silence voices they disagree with, it sends a dangerous message that government is about power, not service, and that, to me, is unacceptable. I have faced unimaginable hardships in my life, challenges that no one should have to endure, but those experiences have made me stronger, and they have fueled my determination to stand up for others. When I speak out about being disrespected, ignored, or undermined, I do it because I know that if it happens to me, an elected official, it is happening to others who don't have the same platform to push back. I will not back down. I will continue to show up. I will continue to fight for transparency, fairness, and accountability in our city government, and I will continue to lift up the voices of those who feel unseen and unheard, because that is what true leadership looks like. Boston deserves leaders who listen, who engage, and who respect the voices of the people, and I will always be one of those leaders, no matter how hard some may try to shut me out. So, thank you for letting me speak on that.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0109 and 0111? I believe we're reading those two dockets together.
I did read them.
We...oh, oh, you've read those?
Yeah.
I thought that they were...
409 and 411.
Oh, let me just make sure that I have mine.
It's the committee report.
Yeah, it's the committee reports for 0109 and 0111.
Yeah, but these two we have to place.
Okay, okay. We're placing those dockets on file, dockets 0409 and 0410. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets number 0109 and 0111? Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Could you please read those dockets?
Docket number 0109, the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on December 4, 2024. Docket number 0109, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $5 million in the form of a grant for the Nazaro Community Center renovation grant awarded by the United States Department of Treasury, passed through the Mass Executive Office of Economic Development to be administered by Property Management. The grant will fund repairs and capital improvements to maintain current functionality and programming at the Nazaro Community Center. submits a report recommending that the grant ought to pass. Docket number 0111, the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, to which was referred on December 4, 2024. Docket number 0111, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $150,000 in the form of a grant for the Age Strong Universal Fund awarded by the donor group to be administered by the Age Strong Commission. The grant will fund senior center programs and services for older adults in Boston. submits a report recommending that the grant ought to pass.
Okay, thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Clerk, for reading those. I won't repeat them. So, this matter was sponsored by Mayor Wu and put into my committee on December 4, and we held a hearing on Thursday, January 30, and we heard testimony on behalf of the administration from Aiman Shelton, Commissioner of Property Management, Mary Steico, Special Assistant to the Commissioner of Property Management, Junior Tatis Zapata, Capital Projects Manager from Property Management also, and for the docket in Age Strong, Emily Shea was here, the Commissioner of Age Strong, along with Miles Garrity, the Senior Director of Finance. With respect to docket 0109, the administration explained the history of the Nazaro Center and the project's construction goals and sustainability efforts. The administration detailed the Nazaro Community Center's history, describing it as a landmark historic building in the North End that has served as a bathhouse and later as a community hub under BCYF since the 1980s. The administration stated that through the planned renovations, the city is aiming to address critical structural needs and modernize city facilities with advanced management tools in alignment...in aligning with Mayor Wu's Boston Resilient Buildings Program, which emphasizes sustainability facility management. It was explained that the renovations would focus on structural repairs, including much-needed improvements to the building's systems, roof, drainage, and accessibility compliance, and would be overseen by the architectural firm of Odin's Elo, who previously worked on the Boston Public Library Central Branch and specializes in historic renovations. Finally, the administration confirmed that the next phase of the project would involve finalizing the scope of the work, a five-month design period, and a projected construction start in September of 2025. With regard to programming, the committee inquired about whether alternative programming spaces would be utilized or had been considered, and the administration assured that adjustments would be made to minimize disruption with potential relocation to other community centers if necessary. With respects to docket 0111, the administration explained how Age Strong Universal Fund functions and how donations are collected and utilized. It was explained that the fund was established in collaboration with the auditing department to manage small donations for senior centers and event sponsorships without requiring separate approval for each contribution. It was further explained that annually, the funds are distributed across senior centers and programs as needed. In response to questions about public accessibility and tracking the allocation of the donations that comprise the fund, the administration confirmed that the funds are accounted for internally, however, the information is not publicly accessible on any kind of platform. I would like to thank Counselor Flynn for joining me at this hearing, and also just want to highlight that state rep, Erin Mikewitz, for getting this $500 million through Opera Funds at the state for the much-needed work in the North End at the Nazaro Center. So, as the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, I recommend moving this...these dockets from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action, and at this time, I am recommending that we pass both of these. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counselor Murphy for her leadership on this grant. I was at this important discussion, and want to also thank Commissioner Shelton for his work, but I also want to acknowledge the...our federal partners in Washington under the Biden-Harris administration, our two U.S. senators, Senator Warren, Senator Maki, but also Congressman Lynch as well, working closely with our state delegation, including the governor and Erin Mikewitz, who we just saw a few minutes ago down at the Toziah Quincy School. So, I want to acknowledge Chairman Mikewitz as well. The Nazaro Center is not in my district, but many of my constituents use the Nazaro Center. It's just outside of my district, and many from the WEF District Council that I... It's just outside of my district, and many from the WEF District Council that I represent in the downtown community as well know how important this facility is to families. The Nazaro Center is about bringing people together. It's been doing that for so many years, and I'm proud to support this and proud to have been at that meeting. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, Council Murphy seeks acceptance. The chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0109. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0109 has passed. The chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0111. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0111 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0190?
Docket number 0190, the Committee on Rules and Administration, to which was referred on January 8th, 2025. Docket number 0190, ordered to implement a non-disclosure agreement prohibition policy for Boston City Council. submits a report recommending that the docket ought to pass in a new draft.
Council President Louie Jean, you have the floor.
And Councilwoman Brayden, you should take us. You should have a seat, so, okay. The Committee on Rules and Administration was referred to following dockets for consideration. Docket number 0162, order for a hearing regarding use of non-disclosure confidentiality in any and all other types of employment agreements, and docket number 0190, ordered to implement a non-disclosure agreement prohibition policy for Boston City Council. This matter, the first matter, was sponsored by Councilor Erin Murphy. The second matter was sponsored by Council Benjamin Weber, referred to committee on January 8th, 2025. We had a robust discussion on the use of these agreements last Friday. Thank you to my colleagues for joining. We were joined by councilors Coletta Zapata, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Weber, Worrell, and myself. Docket number 01, we had a discussion on docket number 0162, the role or the lack of a role of NDAs in city government, and docket number 0190, in order to implement a policy that would prohibit councilors from requiring staff in their office as a condition of employment to sign or agree to any non-disclosure, non-disparagement, or confidentiality provisions, or any other provisions that attempt to restrict disclosure regarding unlawful acts in the workplace, including but not limited to harassment, discrimination, retaliation, or other forms of misconduct. This proposed policy would also prohibit councilors from seeking to enforce any non-disclosure, non-disparagement, or other similar clause in existing agreements between the city and a city council staff member that was entered into as a condition of employment. Under the proposed policy, it would be the responsibility of the staff director and each councillor or staff designee to ensure that all employees, staff, volunteers, and interns who report to them know about this policy. The purpose of this docket is to make sure that there is public confidence in the body. This hearing, as I said, was held on Friday, January 31st, 2025, and it also had, we also had more discussion just about standardizing certain practices across the office, about best practices, and I think it was a really fruitful and robust conversation. So, again, thank you to my colleagues who were present and who participated, and to talk about how to make this the best work environment as possible for all of our staff who work incredibly hard on all of our behalf. So, thank you also to our staff. The committee discussed the use of such agreements, emphasizing that the city council should uphold the highest standards, fostering an environment where staff feel comfortable raising concerns without fear of retaliation. The committee agreed that such agreements should not be used to conceal unlawful behavior and supported preventing the misuse of these agreements. But the committee also weighed the pros and cons of such agreements in terms of preserving certain strategies or confidential information of constituents. But in the end, the committee reviewed the proposed policy's language and clarified that the policy would specifically apply to agreements that are a condition of employment for city council staffers. The committee agreed that if any agreements currently exist, this policy would render them unenforceable by any council moving forward. Through discussions, suggestions were made, and there were three discussions that were made to the language that Council Weber proposed. There were three small amendments. One was to add language to clarify that the policy applies to councilors and their staff who are employed with the city council, meaning that we are controlling what we can, which is right here on the Boston City Council. So, there was language added just to clarify that it was for the city council. And then there was language added regarding, just to clarify that any agreement with respect to bullying would also be prohibited. This council last year very similarly passed in order to prohibit bullying on the Boston City Council, so this language was just added on the suggestion, recommendation of Council Coletta Zapata to add bullying to the language. And then third was just about implementation. There was language added to strengthen the administrative procedures around ensuring that all current and future staff members of the city council are aware of the policy, agree to the policy, and that their agreement is adequately retained. As it was written, there was like, you couldn't be 100% sure that it would apply to current employees, so that third addition was just to ensure that it was not just applying to future employees, but that current employees would also get a copy of the policy. So, those are the three changes that were made. My recommendation is that docket number 0162 remain in committee, and that docket number 0190 ought to pass. I will pass it over to the lead sponsors if they would like to speak on this matter.
Councilwoman Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. Welcome back, Councilwoman Brayden. Thank you to Madam President and to Council Murphy for filing the hearing order. Just, you know, representing workers for the last two decades, I've been concerned by the increased use of non-disclosure agreements, non-compete agreements, arbitration clauses, and all sorts of other agreements that private employers now require employees to sign in order for them to even get a job at a company. I've also been concerned about the spread of the use of non-disclosure agreements in politics, even though they would not be enforceable under our State Whistleblower Act if somebody was coming forward to expose unlawful activity. You know, I do think there is a potential for intimidation, and I just, I don't think they're good public policy. The language of the policy that I drew up does two things. First, it mirrors the language that the state senate passed in 2019 to ban non-disclosure agreements there. It just says, you know, as a body, the councilors agree not to require people to sign non-disclosure agreements, non-compete, I'm sorry, non-disclosure agreements, non-disparage agreements, confidentiality agreements, or anything else that would restrict somebody's ability to expose or to talk about policy issues and what's going on in the council as a condition of working on the council. Number two, it would, the councilors would agree that any of these agreements that they currently have, they would not seek to enforce, and so essentially, by, you know, enacting this policy, we would show the public that we stand together in empowering our staffers to speak out, you know, on behalf of the public, and that we are not only supporting transparency, we're supporting our own staffers. Thank you.
Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brayden. We held an important hearing to examine the use of non-disclosure agreements, confidentiality clauses, and other employment agreements within the council and across city agencies. I'm glad this is staying in committee because we didn't really touch on other city agencies at this meeting yet. So, this discussion is crucial in ensuring that our policies align with the principles of transparency, accountability, and workforce, workplace fairness. While NDAs and confidentiality agreements are often intended to protect sensitive information, their use in municipal government raises serious concerns. In a government that serves the public, it is essential to balance the need for confidentiality with the public's right to transparency, particularly when these agreements have the potential to conceal misconduct, limit accountability, or erode public trust. And all of us, or most of us, probably read the audit that came out from Auditto DiZoglio last week, and the governor swiftly banning them from all state agencies and departments. So, the hearing did provide an opportunity to review existing policies, assess their impact on government transparency, and explore potential reforms. And so, I'm glad we're going to move forward with the policy brief that Council Weber put forth for us on the council. But I do want to say that maybe we could file an amendment to that policy brief, but I know Councilwoman Flynn and I have filed a home rule petition that will be for next week's agenda to expand this for all city agencies across the city. So, I'm not sure if Councilwoman Flynn wanted to speak more on that, but I am looking forward to passing it here on the council, but I feel like that's just the first step, and we do need to go further. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome back as well. I also want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward, especially Council Murphy, who has been working on this issue for a long period of time. I don't believe NDAs or confidential agreements or any other wording we may have to describe them, I don't believe they belong in city government, period. I fundamentally oppose them here on the city council, in city departments, and they're not transparent in we're hiding something when NDAs are signed and kept quiet. Public deserves the right to know, and hiding behind it, NDA only adds confusion. It only adds rumor or facts that are unclear to people, and it brings out the worst in people as well. NDAs have no place at all in city government. Governor Haley was clear about that, and auditor DiZoglio was clear about that, too. Council Murphy mentioned we are filing a home rule to ban them throughout city government. I believe this proposal that I'm going to support doesn't go far enough. We also had, I don't know, maybe seven or six colleagues at the meeting, and it was a very good meeting, but there was a lot of good information that some of our colleagues that weren't there weren't able to understand or work on or add their input. I think their input would have been critical to make this an even more stronger policy. My request is I'd like to ask, respectfully ask, if we could have an amendment to include every city department, and if we want me to provide the correct paperwork, I'd respectfully ask for a brief recess to get the paperwork, so we can add an amendment to include every city department. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn. My sense of the situation is that, Mr. Clerk, is it appropriate to add an amendment since this is very specifically attached to council and city council? Make him an amendment. We'll have a brief recess then. Thank you. We'll recess.
Okay. You have to write out the amendment.
We're back in session. I'm going to call on Councilor Weber. You have the floor. Are you waiting for Flynn?
Yeah.
I'm just waiting for Councilor Flynn to return to the chamber. I'll take that mic off again. Thank you. We're back in session. Councilor Weber, you have the floor.
Okay, just briefly, I don't know if an amendment is being proposed. I don't know. I guess, can you give me five seconds to read the amendment, and then I'll respond.
Has everyone got a, yeah, everyone's getting a copy of the amendment. Just give you a few minutes to read it. He has to propose the amendment. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor if you'd like to offer your amendment, and we need someone to second that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to my colleagues for being patient as I worked on getting this language. I'd like to make a motion. Before I make the motion, I just want to read it into the record as it relates to document 0190. It shall be amended to amend the last sentence to include the following language. The purpose of this policy is to promote transparency, accountability, and to promote public confidence in this body in the prohibition of such agreements citywide. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do we have a second? Councilor Murphy, you have a second. Councilor Weber, so we have to take a vote to, yeah, we'll have some discussion on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Weber, you have the floor.
I guess just one question through the person, I don't know, Council Brayden, the maker? Just one question for the makers, where this would go in the proposal, the proposed policy? Oh, did he? I didn't.
Councilor Flynn, you have the floor. You may answer.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. It would be the last sentence of the written document. And basically, it would be, you know, it would be almost a recommendation for city administration to include this as well, NDAs. It's not mandating that the city administration comply with what we're proposing, but it's basically a recommendation that we think the administration should not go forward with any NDAs because they're not transparent and they take away from the voices of residents. And this type of information, in my opinion, should be public. All NDAs, prior NDAs as well, should be public. But going forward, my goal is to ensure that NDAs have no place at all in city government. This is a recommendation to the city administration that they should follow this recommendation to exclude any NDAs going forward.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilor Weber, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I understand the reasons for the amendment. I mean, I will say, this is our policy. It's a chance for us to sort of, you know, clearly state where we stand on this issue and regulate ourselves, which is what we do through policies. I think we regulate other entities through ordinances, you know. I think there's even a home rule petition coming next week that would do that. So, you know, I think we lead by example. That's why we would do this for ourselves. So, I mean, I guess I don't have, let's see, so it would add that phrase to the end of the first sentence of the policy statement. And promote public confidence. I think it's strangely worded, you know, if it was, if it was something along the lines of, because it's like, we're promoting public confidence in this body, and we're promoting the prohibition of such agreements citywide. It's sort of, I mean, it's our, you know, and like, and advocate for the prohibition citywide, you know, or, but in the end, I mean, I'm happy to just let it go forward for a vote. I don't have strong feelings about it one way or the other. So, just back to you.
Thank you, Councilor Weber. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I do have strong feelings about it, and I think the residents want us to see NDAs excluded citywide. And they don't like the practice. They think it's not transparent. They think we're hiding something. City Hall is hiding something when an NDA is implemented. City departments are hiding something when there's an NDA. It brings out mistrust, and it brings out confusion and rumors. But it also, I think, having, not having NDAs also is a sign that everybody's conduct is going to, and their behavior will be in the public, and you'll be held accountable. And you can't hide behind an NDA to protect the department. You can't hide behind an NDA to protect the city administration. This is about the residents of the city. This is about transparency. This is about good government. This is about ethics. And there's reasons why not to support it, but those are the reasons to support it. I gave my reasons why I don't believe in NDAs, because they're not transparent and people want to see us operating in open public and before residents and being held accountable. They don't want to see NDAs, in my opinion. And I've talked to a lot of people over the last several weeks, and they've said to me, we believe NDAs are not good for the city, they're not good for the residents, and why do you guys have NDAs? Are you guys hiding something? And I said, no, but I think you are right. Having NDAs does bring out the worst in city government, state government. Governor Healey just enacted a plan to exclude NDAs under the advocacy also of the state auditor, Diana De Zolio. So, that's where I stand. I think it is an important message for residents that we take transparency and we take ethics seriously, and we're going to do something about it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn. I think Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, would you like to respond to Councilor Flynn first and then, or take, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just clarifying questions. Councilor Flynn, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I had an NDA, and specifically, if I'm talking trash about my colleagues in the moment, and I disagree with you guys, I'm like, hey, I don't want my staff to tell my other colleagues what I'm saying about them, or the mayor. Like, in the moment, if I'm like, hey, I really disagree with that, like, there could be different reasons why people have NDAs. In fact, I copied mine from a colleague. Many of us have them, but we can get rid of them. Fine, agree with you 100%. The question, though, here is such agreements citywide, kind of general, kind of, you know, open? So, citywide could include non-governmental entities as well, so like, the language should be specific. And then, the other question is then, if this is a policy to change our rules, then laws don't belong in here? And so, if we are trying to legislate a law for city departments, that is the only way or medium that we can use to tell city departments what to do? So, that, I think, it's a great idea for you to file the home rule petition and include that. But if, specifically to the rules, in this policy, we can only tell ourselves to change those rules, you know what I mean? So, like, maybe, I'm not sure if, again, citywide feels too general, too vague, and specifying city departments, and then doing that in the home rule petition, and I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. Councilor Weber?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I just, I think my colleague from District 7 highlighted just the issue without, you know, doing a hearing on this, even knowing whether there are these agreements in city government, and then the fact that there might be good reasons, like, if we hire a vendor who has access to personal information for people, we don't want them disclosing that information. We make them file, you know, sign a non-disclosure agreement or something to that effect. I mean, the issue, I think, is for us to show that we care about transparency on this body and we want to empower staffers. I think the policy does that. You know, I'm prepared to vote for the language. I just, you know, without having done the groundwork, I'm not, you know, I don't know, we don't even know if they're there, but we can certainly promote the removal of them where they're being used in this way, where people aren't allowed to work on the city, you know, for the city unless they sign this. But, again, there may be legitimate purposes for them in some places. I'm not saying they're always, you know, bad policy, but certainly where elected officials are hiring staffers, you know, I stand by the policy and I'm fine to vote for this language, but we'll see how it plays out.
Thank you, Councilor Weber. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to thank my colleagues for their work in this space. As I said last time around, when we were talking about the bullying policy, and I also brought this up during the working session that we had, is that as we continue to implement things, I just want to be super mindful around the cultural competency piece of this work, because sometimes people may want to target your demeanor and the way you express yourself, and that can be considered, just because I'm aggressive and I'm assertive and I'm spicy and sometimes a little bit too saucy for people's appetite, that my demeanor may feel a little bit uncomfortable for some, and I just don't ever want to put myself in a situation for unintended consequences around professional conduct or ethical conduct because of the way I show up in this world. And I just want to make sure that if we're, as we continue to move through these conversations, that we don't have unintended consequences, because I think that sometimes we can utilize tools to just oppress people from being fully expressed. I think this is an issue that I brought to Council Weber during the working session, that we're adding words that could be misconstrued, and in the culture and the climate that we happen to be in, I just want to make sure that this is not going to be a tool that gets used to try to tone or police tone anyone in this chamber or any space that we happen to be in. So, while this is specifically about staff, and I was told that they wouldn't, you all as colleagues would not use it against colleague to colleague, I just want to be known for the record that that is what I'm signing up for, because I am not going to stop speaking the way that I do, showing up the way that I do, and fighting the way that I do, because that is the way I've learned how to show up in this world. And for those folks who do follow me, I want to make sure that they know that they can be themselves, no matter what environment that they're in. And so, I just don't want to get into the culture or to the habit of minimizing or tone policing anyone, particularly in this climate that we happen to be in today.
Thank you, Councilor Mejia. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and I respect my colleagues and their opinions, and one of the concerns is, do we really want to be telling the administration what to do or recommending to the administration what to do? And that's a fair question. That's a fair critique of my proposal, and I respect that. And my answer to that is, my answer to that is, we do that all the time about federal issues. We weigh in on federal issues. What's happening now in Washington DC, we weigh in on that. We have an opinion about cuts to various programs and services, how it impacts Boston. We weigh in specifically on state legislation all the time and the impact. We weigh in specifically on state legislation all the time and the impact it could have on Boston. On federal issues, it's unlikely that our written document, our resolution has any, has any weight to it. And that might be true, but it says to Boston residents that this issue, whatever, whatever issue it is, that this is our policy, this is our, this is what we believe in. And what happens, what happens in DC, we want to weigh in with the resolution in support or against something, because we feel very strongly about what is happening. It may not have any weight to it, but we, we feel strongly about it. As it relates to this, this change, my recommendation, it may not have any weight to it, but what it does say is that we recommend to the city administration that they also should exclude NDAs going forward, whether it's at BPS, whether it's at any other city department. So, certainly, it can be ignored, but it's a value statement. It's a value statement on what we believe in, and I think a lot of resolutions that we file here in the city council oftentimes are not related to city issues, but we still file them because of the value statements. This one has a major impact on, on city government, and I think it's appropriate that we weigh in. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn. Councilor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilor Flynn, not that it shouldn't be put in here, I'm saying it's not enforceable. So, I'm agreeing with you again. We can say it, but then it's not enforceable. And I'm saying, then maybe just waiting for the home rule petition where it is a law, because council rules is not the platform, the place to tell administration what to do. So, looking forward to your home rule petition. But again, the value statement is shared by everybody, and we should tell the administration what to do, because that's our job as legislators, but through laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Flynn?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to make it easier, Vanessa from my team is making that change to the, to the wording that might help us. Instead of saying citywide, it would say city departments, so it's more clear. She should be back in another minute.
Thank you, Councilor Flynn.
Yeah, thank you.
I, I think the issue at how, at the core of this question is that these, this is a, this, this recommendation is to change our rules, and they're applied to our operation as a city council, but they actually, we cannot write rules, we don't write rules for the rest of city departments. I think, I think the vehicle to get there is, is, is the, the home rule petition or an ordinance to, to make that change and that, ask for that change across the city. So, I really, at this moment in time, I am going to take chair's privilege and say that Councilor Flynn's motion to amend has been moved and seconded by Councilor Murphy. Mr. Clerk, and I would like to move to a vote. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote for, on Councilor Flynn's motion to amend?
Counselor Braden.
Yeah, and, no. Oh, sorry. Hmm? My mic's off, sorry. Mic's off. Break your part.
Thank you. Counselor Braden.
No.
Counselor Braden, no. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, no. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Present.
Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, present. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louzien.
Present.
Counselor Louzien, present. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, present. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin.
Present.
Counselor Peppin, no. Counselor Santana.
Present.
Counselor Santana, present. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Rell. Four votes in the affirmative, three votes in the negative, four votes present.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair of the Committee on Rules and Administration seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0190 in a new draft. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
I'm opposed.
Mr. Clerk, could you please count the vote?
Docket number 0190. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson.
Present.
On the docket 0190.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louzien.
Yes.
Counselor Louzien, yes. Counselor Mejia. Yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Rell. Eleven votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The committee report has been accepted, and docket 0190 has been passed in a new draft. Madam President's. Counselor Flynn, you have a point of order, point of order?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So, my amendment was, was included in this draft?
It failed.
It failed.
Your amendment failed.
Didn't get a majority.
Yes.
Four, four to three? That's a majority of seven. And, and we had four present? Is that right? Can you read the results, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk?
We had one, two, three, four. Counselors voted present. One, two, three, four voted yes, and one, two, three voted no.
Thank you. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to just, I, I put a question and a concern as it relates to this particular policy, and I didn't hear anything on an official public, just because we're in a very interesting climate and culture in this chamber. And I just want to make sure that the, like, I made an assertion of some of the, how uncomfortable and how sometimes unsafe it is for people who are a little bit like me here. And so, I just want to make sure that, because this is a policy that we're passing here, that it will not have any unintended consequences when you all are feeling that I am being a little bit, or anybody's being assertive, or if anyone is utilizing their platform to fight. I just want to make sure, because you're the president.
Sure, sure.
And your discretion, because that's how it's been.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that I just.
I'm happy to speak on that.
Let me finish my thought. I want to make sure that we're not creating an environment in this particular body where people are, are approving policies that then will then be used against them in the future. So, out of my own safety and for my own concern, I just want to make sure that whatever I signed up for, I know exactly how it's going to get implemented. We talked about staff. I just want to make sure, because I know the environment, I just want to make sure that I am not putting myself at risk for any type of unintended consequences.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia, and thank you for elevating that. You elevated it at the working session as well. I think Counselor Weber stated that this is about agreements between us as employers and staff upon employment. It's just that relationship. I think the question that you have regarding showing up is more about the bullying policy. This is just about NDAs and confidentiality agreements. So, based on the wording of this policy order that we just adopted, no issue.
No, I just want to be clear. I just, I am, I am going to always make sure that I fully understand, because the, to Counselor Coletta's recommendation, there was an addition to the policy which included bullying, and I just want to make sure that we're all clear, because there's, there's cultural competency, there is interpretation, and I just want to make sure that, you know, you just said harassed, I just want to make sure that that was added and baked in and that we understand what that means.
Thank you. So, there is a list in the policy of a non-exhaustive types of behavior that aren't covered under the NDA, and bullying was simply added as one. But again, the overarching issue is about NDAs, agreements between you as a, as a employer and your staff. Has nothing to do with an intra-council relationship. Happy to talk more with you if there's a continued confusion about the difference between the two, but as it, we're going to move forward on this, on this topic. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
I don't want to belabor this, but I'm confused now. Is there a contingent document to the, what we just passed, or are we clear?
No, no, it's what we just.
That it was one document, what we just passed? Okay.
Exactly. That's the document. Two paragraphs, that was it. Okay. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0148?
Docket number 0148, order for a hearing to discuss Boston Public Schools fiscal year 26 budget.
Thank you. And I also just wanted to say thank you to Counselor Braden for being up here. The Vice, the Vice President's not here, but thank you, Counselor Braden, for coming up and welcome back. So, I wanted to thank you. Okay, the Chair recognizes the Vice Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor. Okay, let me just.
Thank you, Madam President. This week, we had an amazing working session with our council colleagues to discuss the start of the budget process for BPS, where we heard a lot of our counselors' concerns and questions about the budget, especially our RFI that we were drafting to that next month, where we do meet with the superintendent and the, and the chief, the CFO. We're able to provide them with proper questions to make sure that they have the answers to them, and we know what the process will be like for the year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peppin. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to acknowledge Counselor Peppin and his leadership for this important discussion we had. It was informative, it was a good back and forth about how we go forward on the budget, what our priorities are. I learned a lot listening to my colleagues and learning more about BPS. So, I wanted to acknowledge the professionalism of Counselor Peppin in managing that meeting and being very inclusive. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Counselor Peppin, for that, I think, very useful hearing to continue the conversation about the school budget that we all care about so much. I did just want to uplift the Chair of Education, and I considered a brave question you brought forward when you came to that hearing about what are the implications and what, what do the rules actually state when it comes to our votes? And I know that we have put that question onto the record, and I do believe that us as a body should come together again before then to really understand what a no vote to the BPS budget means and what a one vote budget would mean to the city and to our students. So, that's an important thing for us to know, because like many of us stated, I voted no on the BPS budget, and I've always given my reasons why. And we have said in that meeting, it was clear that we may, for the first time in maybe ever, or in many years, want to work together as a body and really advocate for issues and things we want to see and make sure our students and teachers have and our families have in the upcoming budget. And if we do work together, then, you know, we can have more strength, making sure that we can advocate and make sure before we just rubber stamp it the first round. So, looking forward to finding out and making sure that we're hearing that answer altogether. I think that's also important, that it's not just one-offs and people are hearing separately, so we may interpret differently. So, I think that conversation is important, and maybe that's a conversation we have in an education hearing before the vote comes up, or maybe it's in Ways and Means rules, wherever it lands. I think it's important that we have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Okay. This docket, docket number 0148, will remain in committee. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Per Rule 39, a lead sponsor has the floor for three minutes. When a new filed docket is introduced, co-sponsors and other counselors have the floor for two minutes. And the proper place for us to speak on these matters is working sessions and hearings. Also, I don't think there are that many refiles, but given the, when there are, I, my recommendation to this body is to speak for 30 seconds to a minute. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0411?
Docket number 0411, Counselors Peppin and Fitzgerald offer the following: ordinance to establish a school bus violation detection monitoring system.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Last week, I filed an order with Counselor Fitzgerald to adopt the new state's general laws to permit the installation and operation of school bus violation detection monitoring systems. I thank you all for passing that order, and today I rise to put forward this ordinance that would amend the City of Boston Municipal Code to codify this commitment to school bus safety. This ordinance proposes an amendment to the codes governing the Boston Transportation Department to detail the processes for operation, enforcement, and maintenance of the monitoring system. I cannot stress the importance of this new safety measure, as impatient drivers violate the school bus stop sign every single day. Just this morning, a very concerned and frightened father on Fondo Road in Rosinow called me after shielding his son with special needs from a speeding car trying to get around on the school bus. I cringe at the thought of that phone call could have been if the father was not paying attention. And I cringe even more knowing that the driver is more, more like, more than likely not going to get ticketed for their reckless behavior. I look forward to further discussions of this ordinance and implementation of this enforcement measure as soon as possible, so no child is at risk just getting to and from school. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the maker, Counselor Peppin, steadfast advocate on this issue. Government can often be seen as reactive rather than proactive, but now with the state giving us this opportunity to act, we should move on adding school bus cameras as fast as possible. Sending your child to school should not give parents a reason to worry, but with the driving we all witness every day and the unfortunate news that comes across our newspapers and televisions almost daily with regards to vehicular accidents and deaths, it's quite obvious the accountability of drivers following the rules of the road has waned. This tool will help bring back accountability to our drivers while protecting our most precious resource, our children. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the makers in, in support of this, but I do just want to rise to say it's discouraging that we have to keep adding more layers of government when we could lean on and implement the rules and laws that we already have in place. So, I do just, many times in these past three years I've been on the council, we're passing ordinances or filing for new rules in the city when we already know that there's laws that could already implement and keep our students safe, our children safe. So, it's unfortunate that we need this, so I will obviously be supportive of it if it keeps and helps our children stay safe. But I do just want to flag that there are rules, and it could go to, which a hearing order that I filed later on in the meeting about, you know, the lack of police staffing, so it could be just not able to have enough police giving out the tickets that are necessary. But if someone's speeding through a stop sign or driving around a bus, they should automatically be pulled over and ticketed. And so, if this adds safety, I'm for it, but just wanted to put that out there, that as we continue to just add more layers to government, I don't think that helps the residents.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Durkin, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0411, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0412?
Docket number 0412, Counselor Santana offer the following: order for a hearing regarding the public safety requirements and possible locations for a new emergency operations center in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the opportunity last year with my colleague, Counselor Flynn, to go visit the emergency management center over in District 7. And although they're doing amazing work and have a great team, something that was very evident was the facility and the conditions. And right now, I know my colleagues, Counselor Murphy and Counselor Flynn and others too, you know, have been advocating for, for us to make sure that we're prepared in case of any emergency here in the city of Boston. And I think the lack of a proper functioning facility for our emergency management team is, is a barrier right now. So, you know, I filed this hearing order just to have a conversation for our colleagues, for myself, to be informed about the possible solutions. I know that whenever we're talking about major facilities, we're talking a lot, we're talking about major investments and the money, and I think, you know, this is just a hearing And I think, you know, this is just a hearing order, a conversation, just to be able to see what are possible solutions to this. You know, we're talking about some of the emergencies that we can face here in Boston. We can be talking about winter storms, hurricanes, and other large storms, but also natural disasters, outages, terrorists and cybersecurity attacks, public health emergencies. And, you know, some of these emergencies will require, you know, multiple departments to be able to get together, especially in terrible conditions. And we need to be able to have a center that has, again, just proper basic things, just like water, power, showers that are functioning. And so, again, this is just a hearing order. Would love to be able to hear from my colleagues and from appropriate departments and personnel about the possible solutions. I think we should explore, you know, potentially looking at old fire stations or as we're renovating other facilities to be able to just be creative. We can also look at private partnerships with this. The Office of Emergency Management heavily relies on federal grants just for their personnel. And so we should just be exploring this. I definitely want to be able to advocate for the individuals who wake up every day to make sure that we're in the best position as a city in case of any emergency. So really looking forward to this conversation, and I hope to have many of my colleagues at the conversation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Brayden. Counselor Brayden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Santana, for bringing forward this hearing order. When we were doing some research into the capital planning process and we came across the Emergency Operations Center, like I think it's 10 to 12 years ago, going back, maybe 14 years, it was pegged as having a $19 million, a price tag of $19 million to identify a new location and build a new emergency operations center. Here we are, a long time later, and we still haven't moved forward on that issue. It's one of the issues why we're really so concerned about our facilities planning and capital planning in general, that it seems like an emergency operations center should take priority, but over several administrations, that priority has never been identified and given the sense of urgency that we need. When you see what happens in a superstorm Sandy incident where you have a lot of damage from high winds and flooding, other emergency events that require a robust and coordinated emergency response, it's really very, very important that we have a state-of-the-art emergency operations center so that we can respond appropriately in a timely way. So I, please add my name to this hearing order, and thank you for bringing it forward. It's an important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselman Flynn. Counselman Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say thank you to Counselor Santana for bringing this important discussion forward. Boston certainly needs a state-of-the-art emergency management facility. I had the opportunity to visit the emergency management facility with Counselor Santana and others recently and over the years. And what I can say is the personnel there do a tremendous job. They are professional. However, the facility itself is clearly not helpful. It's not useful. It's old. It's obsolete, in my opinion. I've been around these types of issues my entire life, working in the military, but I think Boston, as Counselor Santana highlights, Boston needs a new emergency management facility. I also think Boston needs and deserves a state-of-the-art fire headquarters as well. The fire headquarters that we currently have, in my opinion, is old, is obsolete, is rundown, is an embarrassment. Boston should have a state-of-the-art fire headquarters. Boston should have a state-of-the-art emergency management facility. Again, want to say thank you to Counselor Santana. One particular issue I do want to focus on as it relates to emergency management, and Counselor Santana phrased it perfectly, but as it relates to evacuation routes during an emergency, how are we preparing residents living in public housing that may speak a language other than English? Are we confident that we're able to get residents out of their public housing building immediately? Were we able to communicate that message and get them to a safe space? I don't think we're there right now, and I think that's up to the City Council to work with the city administration to work on those logistic types of issues as well. So just an issue I'm focused on, I want to continue to work with my colleagues on. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to thank the makers for bringing this. I just want to go on the record, you know, budget season is coming down the pipeline, and this is really an opportunity for us to identify where the gaps are and how we can fill those gaps. And while I'm here and have the mic, I just also want to note to Counselor Flynn's point, and I believe Counselor Murphy also mentioned it, that a lot of our firehouses are also feeling the crunch. You know, some of them have broken windows. There's so much facilities, and so a lot that we could be doing. And so I look forward to having the hearing, and more importantly, actually making sure that when we're having these budget discussions, that those issues get addressed in our budget discussions, particularly for the firehouses that have broken windows right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Brayden, Durkin, Flynn, Fitzgerald, Fernandez Anderson, Murphy, Mejia, Peppin, Weber. Please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0412, will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0413?
Docket number 0143, Counselor Santana offer the following: order for a hearing regarding all City of Boston grants administered by the Office of Emergency Management, including the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant and Emergency Management Performance Grant.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. If this seems familiar, it probably is, I'm doing the same thing with the Office of Emergency Management that I'm doing with the police grants, with the fire grants. This is just a way to be able to have, you know, hearings on the different grants that are coming from the Office of Emergency Management, being able to have personnel to explain those grants. I've heard from my colleagues that they also want people who are, you know, on the ground to be present in those hearings. So I'm very much committed to that. I also know that last year, and every year, I think the U.S.C. grant is passed very late in the year. This would give us an opportunity to also have those conversations earlier in the year and making sure that, you know, residents feel engaged in those conversations, that my colleagues feel that nothing is rushed in those decision makings. So, you know, we're very much looking forward to this hearing, and I hope that my colleagues can join me in learning more about these grants. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Santana. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Brayden. Oh, you're looking to speak on this matter? Okay, apologies. Okay. The Chair recognizes Counselor Brayden. Counselor Brayden, you have the floor.
Once again, thank you, Counselor Santana, for this hearing order. I really appreciate your attention to these important issues. The Office of Emergency Management, this is one of the grants that we had, the grant for the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant and the Emergency Performance Grant. When we got into looking at the auditor's report for some of these big grants, we learned to our dismay that there had been in past years poor reporting back, because we send this money out to other municipalities, not just Boston, and poor reporting back of how the money was spent and time sheets, et cetera, and detailed reports on how the money was spent. And also, we also did find, like it was a more appropriate best practice, was that in some instances, some years ago, it was itemized lists of how the money was spent, and especially related to equipment, and you got a clear sense of what the priorities were and how the money was being used and whether it's been used appropriately or not. These grants tend to be around $13 million, and in the present climate in the United States, especially what's happening in DC at the moment, it's really important that we do due diligence on ensuring that we are doing best practices in getting these grants, and also how we're monitoring how the money's been expended, and then also looking at outcomes. So I really appreciate the opportunity to talk more at a deeper level with folks from the emergency management. Very often, the emergency management grant, even though it's a big grant, is discussed at the end of a hearing, and there's about 10 minutes to ask questions, and it's really not good. So I look forward to a more detailed and deeper dive into how the money's spent. And then in the context of, you know, climate change and possibly of extreme weather events here in the city, how do we shift from that sort of homeland security type mindset to how do we handle a big storm that would be devastating to all of our communities across the city? So thank you for this.
Thank you, Counselor Brayden. The Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I failed to mention a lot of things, but Counselor Brayden covered them for the most part, and I really appreciate that feedback and looking forward to the conversation. One thing that I also, you know, I think I mentioned earlier today, but the Office of Emergency Management personnel, including, you know, the chief, they heavily rely on federal grants. And right now, again, with what's happening in DC with things that are, you know, our federal grants, we may not always see them. So I just want to be, again, heading into budget season, intentional about, you know, how we're funding the Office of Emergency Management, how we're working together with the administration to make sure that we continue to have the right personnel there. And this will also be an opportunity to be able to discuss that, but I just wanted to make sure to put that into the record for their advocacy. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselman Flynn. Counselman Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and one of my colleagues mentioned that the grant is traditionally around $12 or $13 million, which is accurate, and that money is used as a regional approach in supporting public safety agencies throughout greater Boston that often border Boston, whether it's Somerville, or Cambridge, or Quincy, or Chelsea, or other neighborhoods, Newton. Obviously, what happens in Chelsea has an impact on East Boston, vice versa. What happens in Newton has an impact on Brighton. So these funds, these federal funds, are critical for our public safety professionals. They rely on them. They have a dedicated working group, a task force, that works on this specific issue, homeland security-related issues are included. But Boston is basically the fiscal agent, and we receive the money, and then we kind of distribute the money appropriately. So going forward, it is important for us to have hearings on this, but also to accept the money, because other cities and towns are waiting for Boston to accept that money. So adding delays in receiving this money does have an impact on cities and towns that do not have the financial capabilities such as Boston. And it does have an impact when we delay particular votes on this subject. So I would encourage my colleagues to continue to support these grants, because they do impact residents throughout greater Boston. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Brayden, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Flynn, Murphy, Mejia, Peppin, Weber. Please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0413, will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0414?
Docket number 0414, Counselor Mejia offer the following: order for a hearing to audit the implementation and effectiveness of the 2014 Boston Trust Act.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Madam President, I'd like to add you as an original co-sponsor.
I'm so added. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to just acknowledge and just thank you for the time that you took to meet with me earlier this week in regards to committee assignments and things landing where they go. And I just want to thank you for taking the time to school me and for your willingness to move things around to support some of the advocacy that I've been doing. And while you did offer to put this in my committee, I just want to just rise to thank you for your leadership and to let you know that we're good where you're going to place it, because I believe in your leadership. So thank you. So going back to this particular hearing order, as we have seen in these past few weeks, the safety of our immigrant communities is being threatened by a new wave of federal policies and hateful rhetoric. And our city, despite being the safest majority city in the country, is being targeted for our commitment to ensuring that all people feel safe and welcomed. I filed this hearing order to give us the opportunity to strengthen that commitment, as in this moment in time, it's what it's calling for. There have been drastic changes to our legal, social, and political landscape since the Trust Act was first created in 2014, and even since the most recent amendments that was passed in 2019. The fear still persists, but they feel a little bit different this time. Immigrants across the city are fearful of going to work. They're hesitant to take public transportation and are afraid to really be anywhere that is not their home. Yet, even despite all of the work that we've been doing, many still don't feel safe, and the fear tactics being implemented by our nation's leaders are aiming to paralyze, silence, and erase our immigrant communities. But we must push back and ensure that our policies and protections, such as the Trust Act, are stronger. As members of city government, we serve as the last line of defense for our immigrant constituents and against federal government, which views their existence as criminal. Immigrants are our friends, family, neighbors, and colleagues. They are us. They are me. And we deserve to be in all spaces and places across the city without fear that the public safety departments will collaborate with ICE to detain us. We must take a deep dive into the Trust Act to make sure that it is ready to meet this moment. I look forward to having this hearing, and I urge my colleagues to join me in the audit and to see the current implementation and the finances and how effective the 2014 Trust Act is. And I hope that we will be able to fill in those gaps and strengthen it to make it stronger. And I'll just say really quickly that in 2020, my maiden speech was on safe sanctuary spaces here in the City of Boston. And I remember getting a hateful voicemail, because I had the audacity to speak up and fight for those who are living in fear. And that hateful voicemail, I was told, "Don't say anything. You only won by one vote. Do you really want to call attention to yourself?" And I said, "Yes, I do." Because if I didn't speak up, then I was letting everybody know that they can continue to put us in check. And, you know, I survived the previous administration, Counselor District 9 and our District Counselor District 2, both were here. I think we're the only ones that were here during the Trump administration, and that was a moment. And I think what we're experiencing now gives us the opportunity to really step up and make sure that the work that we're doing reflects the values of this body. And I look forward to having the conversation, and I want those who are tuning in to know that we are here to fight for you, alongside you, and when things are not working for you, that our job is to make sure that we are utilizing our platform, audits, hearings, ordinances, resolutions, to stand up and say that we see you, we affirm you, and we're here to fight for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? The Chair recognizes Counselman Flynn. Counselman Flynn, you have the floor.
And thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we all believe, I certainly believe, that when someone does commit a crime, regardless of immigration status, we can't stand in the way of justice for a survivor, the impacted community, and society. Residents deserve safe and healthy communities. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone in the council. I know that we just reaffirmed the Trust Act unanimously, and I look forward to the work. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you. Sorry, Madam Chair, I just want to like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Peppin. Sorry, Madam Chair, I just would like to suspend Rule 12 and add Councilor Pepe as an original co-sponsor.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Mejia seeks to suspend the rules to add Councilor Pepe as the third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Councilor Pepe is so added. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, would you please add Councilors Braden, Fernandez-Anderson, Fitzgerald, Santana, Weber? This docket, docket number 0414, will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0415?
Docket number 0415, Councilor Mejia offered the following. Order for a hearing to audit the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So I filed this hearing in order to audit the 2024 Comprehensive Financial Report to continue my work in ensuring proper accountability, transparency, and accessibility in how we conduct the financial matters here in the city of Boston. The annual comprehension, comprehensive financial report prepared by the auditing department provides key insights to how the city revenues, expenditures, and investments align with our obligations and priority. This hearing will allow us to examine the city of Boston's financial health and ensure that we are making informed, responsible, and responsible decisions for our residents. With many questions about our spending bubbling up to the top recently, it has become apparent that we, as a body, need to take more concrete steps in ensuring that every dollar is spent as we intended. We have an opportunity to do so by auditing the FY 2024 Financial Report, by reviewing expenditures, identifying inefficiencies, and reinforcing, and reinforcing public trust in our financial decision-making. We have a lot of conversations about what it means to be fiscally responsible here in this chamber. So for the sake of actually living up to that, I look forward to holding this audit and hearing from the administration. I hope my colleagues will join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Mejia, I'm sorry, Braden, Murphy, Fernandez-Anderson, Pepe, Santana, Weber, please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0415, will be referred to the Committee on Post Audit Government Accountability, Transparency, and Accessibility. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0416?
Docket number 0416, Councilors Mejia and Weber offer the following. Order for a hearing on workforce development housing for the city of Boston employees.
The chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is a refile, so I believe there's some rules about how much oxygen I can occupy. So I just want to thank Councilor Weber for joining me. I refiled this hearing order because it's beyond time to listen to our lowest-paid workers when they tell us that it is increasingly challenging for them to stay in the city, placing their jobs and livelihood at risk. Despite a residency requirement that mandates employees to live within the city, incredibly high housing costs now averaging over $3,393 per month, 118% higher than the national average, what folks are making, it's making it more and more difficult for workers to remain here in Boston. Many employees are forced into subsidized or substandard housing, long commutes, or even leaving their jobs altogether. If we want to retain a strong, dedicated, and stable workforce, we must take bold action to ensure that municipal employees, particularly workers earning the lowest wages, have access to housing they can afford. Other cities across the country have begun implementing innovative workforce development housing initiatives, and Boston must leverage the talent and wealth the city has to do the same. Our municipal employer, workers are the backbone of our city. These workers keep our schools running, our streets and parks clean, our public transit operational, and our services accessible. That said, too many of them are being priced out of the very communities they serve. When workers can no longer afford to live here, it weakens our city's stability, workforce retention, and overall quality of life. This moment calls for a real commitment to supporting the people who make our city run to ensure that Boston remains a competitive and equitable city. I also just want to note for the record that our office fought for a housing fund of, I believe it was $750,000, to support municipal employees. That was one of the negotiating things that I fought for during the COVID relief efforts. And so that money came and went and it dried up. And I think it's really important for us in this moment in particular to recognize that our city employees are doing the work while other folks are getting paid for it. And I think that there's a lot of injustices. They're usually, the lowest wages are usually the first people to leave. And I think that we have an opportunity to change the way we do business. And I think enforcing and creating opportunities for meaningful workforce development housing for our municipal employees demonstrates that we, as a council, are not just providing people lip service. While I understand there's efforts to increase it through the increasing wages, that's one, but I do believe that we have an opportunity for looking at employees as a whole and housing and their stability is a part of that conversation. So I look forward to having the hearing and more importantly, maybe putting some money aside in our budget to pilot something a little bit more aggressive. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Weber. Councilor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you to Councilor Mejia for leading this effort. You know, I think we've all heard too often about vacancies in city departments that provide essential services that can't be filled because people can't afford to live here. I think this is, you know, an innovative approach to providing the housing that will allow people to live and work in the city and support our residents. And I think as we look at this, we should also look at the living wage ordinance and making sure, you know, we're providing the wages that our city workers deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Madam Chair, and want to say thank you to Councilor Mejia for bringing this forward, but also the important work she has done consistently in supporting city employees, especially low-wage city employees. Two points I want to make, Madam Chair, would be, and I know Councilor Mejia referenced, referenced both of them. Residency, especially for the lowest-wage city employees, it's almost impossible for them making $30,000 a year, making $40,000 a year, to try to get an apartment or even buy a home or. But to rent an apartment is almost impossible. Are we able to consider giving residency waivers to the lowest-wage city employees? They can't make it here in Boston on their salary, $40,000, and maybe they have a family. Very difficult, extremely difficult. That one issue. And the second issue, as many of you know, when we have union contracts here, the increase usually has been 2% for the lowest, the lowest-wage city workers. And I always challenge the city administration, regardless of who it is, what administration it is. Is that the best we can do? That's the question I ask. And sometimes people get upset with me for asking, but a 2% raise for city employees is not enough. Factoring inflation, it's almost a pay decrease, in my opinion. I'm going to continue advocating for a decent wage for our lowest-wage, our lowest-paid city employees, but I would also ask my fellow city councilors, during the opportunity when we talk about union contracts, let's also ask about these low wages and how do we increase that wage? Instead of 2%, are we able to increase it to 3%? Many other city unions get 3%. But the lowest-wage workers oftentimes get 2%. I think it's important for all of us to advocate for them so that they can receive a decent wage, so that they can support their families in living dignity. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilor Mejia, for once again bringing this, this very important issue forward. The, the mixed income, we really just aren't, we need to build more housing, but we also really need to be able to build more mixed-income housing. I think the reality of the situation is that the middle-income housing is the most difficult to fund and finance. The luxury housing will take care of itself, and the low-income housing is very often able to get subsidies and grants from federal and state and other sources. But it's the middle-income folks, the folks that are learning, earning maybe $60,000 to maybe $100,000, they're the most, that's the most difficult space in which to get funding to subsidize the building of those homes. And I think that this is, this is where the pain point is, and I think we have to really put our shoulders to the wheel and try and figure out some different approaches. I do like the notion presented by Councilor Santana, the whole issue around social housing. That's certainly an area we need to dive into with more. And we also need to do more to promote our nonprofit housing developers as they are able to, they're not paying dividends to their investors and their private equity funds. They are building houses for those that most need it. So I think we have lots of space here to explore other options and learn, learn more and, and see what we can do because we're not facing into a very promising environment with regard to federal funding. So we have to sort of pull our, pull our heads together and see if we can come up with other creative solutions. So thank you, Councilor Mejia, and also thank you, Councilor Santana, for your work on the whole question of social housing. As the Chair of the Housing Committee, I really appreciate those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Fernandez-Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0416, we refer to Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0417?
Docket number 0417, Councilor Flynn offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss Holocaust and genocide education in the Boston public schools.
The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm filing this hearing order today as I believe Holocaust and genocide education is critical for our middle and high school students to learn about the horrors of the past, to recognize that national, ethnic, racial, or religious hatred can manifest in acts of extreme violence and create suffering for marginalized people and groups. In 2021, the Mass State House passed a bill, an act concerning genocide education, that amended the Mass general laws to ensure every school district provides instruction on the history of genocide. The act also established and set up a separate fund, the Genocide Education Trust Fund, for the purpose of educating middle and high school students on the inhumanity of genocide. At that time, I offered a resolution in support of the bill, which the Boston City Council unanimously supported. Beginning in 2022, school districts were required to incorporate genocide education in both middle and high school. While the curriculum content standards include several examples, examples of genocide that are not limited to the Holocaust, the Armenian genocide is specifically mentioned, and atrocities in Cambodia and Rwanda. It is unclear which grades and classes at BPS currently receive genocide education and whether this requirement is met by all schools. Since 2021, there have been a dramatic rise in antisemitism graffiti in high schools, colleges, universities, public spaces, including the New England Holocaust Memorial. A United Nations report found that social media has fed into Holocaust denial, and that nearly 10% of posts on Facebook, 15% of posts on Twitter that discuss the Holocaust included denial content. After the horrific terrorist attack by Hamas on October 7th, the instances of antisemitism saw an even sharper rise across the world and right here in New England, Massachusetts, and Boston. In the final analysis in the age of disinformation on social media, it is all the more critical that we do all we can to address the increasing levels of hate and hate crimes, including our school districts, to properly educate our children on the, on the facts surrounding these atrocities. I believe it is our responsibility as a society to ensure that students learn from history so that the horrors of the past will never be forgotten, that both the memories and understandings will outweigh online misinformation and help contribute towards the prevention of mass crimes and unspeakable crimes against humanity. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? The chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. To the Chair, Councilor Flynn, if you could clarify, is this, sorry, is this to include the I in schools so that we can educate students on genocide across the world and history?
Yeah. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. If you'd like to respond, you may.
Madam Chair, I didn't hear the complete question. I'm sorry, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson.
Oh, sorry.
Can you repeat that?
Sorry, I was just trying to clarify, are you asking for us to have a hearing to include diversity, equity, and inclusion education to educate on genocide across the world and history in this country and in others? Just wanted to, because this is, this falls under diversity, equity, and inclusion education. So I was just wondering, like, what was like the direction that you were looking for?
Councilor Flynn, if you'd like to respond to the Chair, you may.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Anderson. This hearing would be specifically on the Holocaust and genocide. The state law from 2021 dictates that cities and towns, the public school systems should be teaching or are required to teach Holocaust, about the Holocaust and genocide. So I want to ensure that we are following the 2021 law that was passed up at the State House.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add, oh, Councilor Braden, I'm sorry, I've been, okay. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Durkin, Fernandez-Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0417, will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0418?
Docket number 0418, Councilor Flynn offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss the status of the South Boston Branch Library Study.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am filing this hearing to discuss the status of the South Boston Library. The South Boston Branch Library study has been marked as to be scheduled since first appearing in the FY 2022 capital budget as a new project. Including this upcoming fiscal year, the project will have been on the city's capital budget plan for four years. Since 2022, the city of Boston has allocated $250,000 in the capital plan for a South Boston Branch Library study to conduct a facility assessment and to develop a building program that reflects the BPL's compass principles and supports the needs of the neighborhood. This study would then contribute towards the design and construction of a new branch library in South Boston to meet the growing needs of the community. It has long been a goal of residents to have an updated library, a state-of-the-art, basic city service library that supports the residents of South Boston, but also the residents throughout the city. A new and updated South Boston Branch Library would follow other significant investments across the city. The South Boston branch of the Boston Public Library is one of the oldest public libraries here in the city, after, after the south end as well. This library, I was there last Saturday, meeting with some residents, talking about quality of life issues. It's an exceptional library, a dedicated team of librarians there. They provide a space for learning, access to critical sources of information, educational resources for residents in the neighborhood. The residents of South Boston, like other neighborhoods, deserve a new library facility, and they want to hear about an update on the status and timeline associated with this important project. One of the things I love doing is going up there and talking to the young, young families that are there, many mothers with their children. I also see a lot of older senior citizens up there that might be retired, but they go up to the South Boston Library to read the paper, to talk to their friends, to, to read a book, to discuss- a book, to discuss community events. They have a courtyard out in the back that's beautiful. My wife Kristen loves going out there in the summertime with a book or reading out there. But libraries are critical to our neighborhood. They bring people together, and I think it's only fair that my neighborhood, like every other neighborhood, has a state-of-the-art public library. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mahia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0418, will be referred to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0419?
Docket number 0419, Councilor Flynn offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss tax exemptions for long-term residents aged 55 and over and above and essential municipal employees.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I add, Council Murphy?
Council Murphy, so added. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. I am filing this hearing to discuss property tax relief for longtime residents and essential municipal employees. Property taxes are a heavy financial burden for many families, especially those who have bought their home decades ago before housing prices and property values skyrocket in the city. After holding several hearings at the Boston City Council in the past with then-City Councilor Michael Flaherty and speaking with my neighbors in District 2 over the past several weeks, I am advocating for the city to consider financial assistance programs for those who are struggling to pay their property taxes, including tax relief or exemptions aimed at long-term residents who have owned a home in Boston for at least 20 years and are aged 55 and older, as well as essential municipal employees. We talk about respect for our city employees, especially our low-wage city employees. Here's an opportunity to help them. Currently, the City of Boston offers a number of property tax exemptions for residents who qualify, including our seniors who meet income limits and residency requirements, those who experience hardship, surviving spouses, minors with a deceased parent, veterans and others. Just recently, we as a body passed a home rule petition from Council Murphy to increase the amount of tax exemption from senior homeowners ages 65 and older. Our longtime residents that have called Boston home for decades, as well as our dedicated city employees, essential workers, they've been severely impacted by soaring property taxes for years. These are neighbors who bought their home decades ago for a fraction of what they're worth. They're on fixed income. They're not wealthy, but they are part of the soul of the city as anyone else. Just last, no, a couple of weeks ago, I was at a store in South Boston on F Street, and there was a retired city employee there. And the city employee was looking at a can of Campbell's Soup, and I said to the retired city employee, I said, "What are you looking at the Campbell's Soup can for?" And they said, "Well, I'm looking at the price at, last week it was, it went up 20 cents." And I said, "Is that a difference for you if the soup can goes up 20%?" And they said, "Yeah, that's a significant increase for me." These are veterans, Little League and hockey coaches, retirees, teachers. They are our neighbors who shovel sidewalks, the elderly. Little by little, we continue to chip away and make it harder for these people who help build this community. Their property taxes, their property values may have increased dramatically due to development around them, but it's getting to be out of reach to stay. And many of these neighbors also rent out floors in their buildings below market rate to those in need. That is a piece of affordable housing in the city that we don't talk about much here in Boston. But in my opinion, I believe it's critical that these residents continue to stay here in the city, contribute to Boston. They've been here during difficult times, and they've been here during good times, and they help build the city. The city should explore a number of different policies from other municipalities to see how we can provide tax relief to these homeowners. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Flynn, and I just want to remind those in the audience to try best to remain silent while councils are speaking. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I do just want to thank our guest for trying her hardest. It's hard, I understand, so thank you for that. Not all of us have the same ability to do that. So thank you, Councilor Flynn, for letting me join you on this hearing order to address the growing concern about the financial burden of property taxes on long-term residents and essential municipal employees in Boston. As we know, many families who have lived in the city for decades are facing increased property taxes due to the soaring real estate market. This, coupled with the economic challenges brought on by the post-pandemic inflation, have left many struggling to make ends meet, especially our seniors and municipal workers who have dedicated years of service to this city. Property taxes are an essential source of revenue for the city, but we must also consider the financial pressures they place on those who have helped build and sustain our communities. The City of Boston already offers property tax exemptions to certain residents, such as seniors and veterans, but we need to explore additional solutions for long-term homeowners, particularly those who have lived in the city for 20 years or more and are 55 years or older. And so when I did read that, Council Flynn, I did tell you I would qualify, so thank you for that, and as well as for our essential city workers who are experiencing financial strain. Other cities like Detroit have taken steps to assist homeowners who face difficulties in paying property taxes based on their income, and Boston should consider similar measures. This hearing will allow us to examine the possibility of creating tax exemptions or relief programs for these key groups, helping to ensure that they are not priced out of their homes. I hope this hearing will help us find ways to protect our long-term residents and essential employees so they can continue to contribute to our vibrant city without the fear of being priced out. Thank you, and I look forward to this hearing.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Fitzgerald, Fernandez Anderson, Mahia, Pepe, Weber, Santana, please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0419, will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0420?
Docket number 0420, Council Santana offered the following: Order for a hearing to explore ways to increase community engagement and better facilitate public participation for Boston City Council hearings.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Santana. Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, we all know city council hearings, committee meetings are publicly noticed. They're posted on the website. They're also sent out on the weekly city council newsletter. I also know many of my colleagues post on their own personal social media to make sure that we have engagement. This hearing is to discuss ways we can go beyond those steps. I'm just going to read a couple of ideas that my team and I came up with, and the hearing is just meant to have an opportunity for my council colleagues to be able to share their ideas, especially ahead of budget season, as we're making some priorities. So, an idea, central staff community liaison. A central staff community liaison will assist with public outreach and reduce duplicated efforts between council offices, so that way council offices can focus on additional community engagement and can maintain central registry members of the public and community orgs that can opt into, and to also help identify potential community panelists and public testimonies to invite. Another idea that we discussed was a potential virtual public testimony improvement. Recognized technical knowledge and equipment can be a barrier, but can also broaden accessibility to, it can better integrate virtual public testimony on equal footing with in-person and the ability to see counselors and other participants while speaking. So, you know, the idea is that we can, with an extra staffer on the central staff, and we can have a full-time person dedicated to community engagement, making sure that our hearings, our meetings are accessible to our community members. I know that we've also even talked about maybe if we were to have such a person and improved equipment, even while we're having hearings in here, we can probably identify different areas in the community where we can have a hybrid model where people can, you know, go to that library or community or VCU or whatever the case may be and be able to testify from there as they're tuning in here. So, you know, I've been hearing from a lot of residents, obviously our hearings are at 10:00 AM or at 2:00 PM. If you're an average resident here in the City of Boston, you're most likely working or at school or doing something else, so this is to be a better way, or hearing, a hearing order to, a discussion to be able to have with all of us to discuss better ways to increase, to increase public engagement within our city council meetings. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Mahia. Council Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to thank my colleague for filing this hearing. I remember in 2018, 2019, when I was running, people would ask me what was going to be my first hearing, and I said I was going to do a hearing on public hearings because they don't work. But actually, because of the climate that we were in, I ended up having to file the hearing on safe sanctuary spaces, so that's what I focused on. But I really do appreciate your intentionality around civic engagement. And I know that Council Braden and then Council Edwards and I worked on digital democracy and making sure that we were meeting the moment and trying to figure out how we could maintain that. I walked into this chamber thinking that we were going to change everything, but then COVID came and changed all of us and even how we functioned. And it really demonstrated that civic engagement increased when we saw people who were able to log in virtually. So I am like here for whatever's going to give people a voice and looking forward to working alongside you. I also think that accessibility to these types of spaces is not just about the times that we have them, but also the types of support services that we're able to provide. So language access, our office was the first office to host a hearing where there was multiple interpretation offered, and so I think that that should be a practice. Oftentimes, when we do it, we do it just if people sign up, and if they do, then we are able to ask for it. So I think that there's so many barriers to engagement, and I also just want to uplift that. I've been talking about childcare and working alongside nonprofit organizations for childcare, not just childcare, but maybe activities for young people who are five years old and over. We don't want to get into the habit of caring for kids because that can get us into some trouble. And I also think that if we're really serious about engagement, then our budgets also have to reflect, you know, some support services for even providing refreshments. I know that sounds crazy. Those are the sort of things that I'd love for us to be able to talk about in terms of real engagement. And then, while I have the mic, I also think it's really important for us to even consider how we facilitate some of these hearings. I think that we have an opportunity to revise the construct in terms of just who speaks first, how much time they have to speak. I think that those are sort of the things that I also would love to see here in your hearing order. And I also think that we have to be super mindful of making sure, or at least I've been trying to do more of this, but that oftentimes when we do have hearings, they're usually stacked. And sometimes we put things out and people show up, and it's based on your constituency and who's following you. But I think having somebody dedicated to also making sure that we're being neutral and that we're having space for all different perspectives to be heard, I think that should be also added to the way we do business here. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also think part of the solution, and I know my council colleagues will be upset with me for saying this, but I think part of the solution is for city councilors to show up to meetings as well. These meetings are on television, they're on video, live, and they're broadcasted throughout the week. And at times, the public will say to me, "Hey, Ed, how come..."
Counselors, if you could, so that Counselor, Council Flynn, you have the floor.
They'll say to me, "Hey, Ed, you know, I noticed there was two colleagues of yours in the chamber." I don't want to call people out, but it's been happening for the longest period of time. I'm not making friends here by pointing out that my colleagues don't show up for meetings. But it sets an example. Do we take meetings seriously, or do we just not show up because of whatever reason? But I think it starts with us. I support this hearing order, but it does start with us. Engaging in being present at these meetings, we should have 95% attendance rating, attendance at every meeting. That's our job. Again, I know people disagree with me, but if we're serious about how we include the public to come to this chamber and observe what we're doing and what the community engagement is, it's upon us to take this responsibility seriously. And it's about showing up, it's about welcoming people, it's about welcoming people with disabilities also into this chamber. Are we making it comfortable for people with disabilities to come into the chamber? We just had, we just had a family that was here a few minutes ago. Are we making it respectful for everybody to come into this, into this chamber, to listen, to welcome them, to respect them? And are we being disrespectful also? Is it disrespectful to the public when only three or four city councilors are present at a meeting? We have to answer that question. I think it is. I think the public wants every single person at a public meeting, regardless of what the subject is. Certainly, I understand if there's a sickness in the family, if there's a medical condition, if your child has to be at school, those are all understandable. But it should not be because I had something I'd rather do in another part of the city. This job is about showing up, and we need to do a better job of that. Lead by example. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Flynn. The Chair recognizes Council Pepe. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to stand in full support of this hearing order. I think that it's a brilliant idea because I've noticed that the best hearings that we have is when they're better attended by the public. And I think that it's really crucial for us to find ways to be able to make it easier for any resident to make it to a city council hearing. So kudos to the civic engagement counselor. And I also always think about, whenever there's a hearing that impacts the youth or students, I would love it if we can hold them after school hours so that we can invite the youth. So just always thinking about them. I think that, I wasn't a counselor yet, but I remember watching the O'Brien hearing. I thought that Mahia did a great job. I don't know, I don't remember if you chaired that.
I did.
But you did a great job, provided childcare, and there was room filled with O'Brien students. So we should see more of that. So I am in full support of this.
Thank you. Would anyone, oh, the Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Santana, for bringing this forward. I do just also want to rise to say some of the best hearings that the public and the community have been fully engaged in have been the ones where we've switched it up. And thank you to Council Mahia for being brave and often doing that, but getting pushback. And Council Fernandez Anderson, you have also done meetings like that. There has been this, because we've always done it, but that does not in any way mean that those are the rules or this idea of best practices. And we, as a body, can always decide what the best practices are, and those change. And the administration oftentimes wants to have their panelists come first, or they choose which panelist or not send them all, and then also on the format of staying through public testimony. So when we're allowing the non-administration panelists to go first, or we're allowing questions from the public to come before the administration panel, I think that oftentimes is more effective. So I do want to put that out there also, and I know we'll talk about it at the hearing, but that the administration... out there also, and I know we'll talk about it at the hearing, but that the administration does not set the rules or the format for the city council, that we should take that power back, and we should make sure that we, as a body, stick up for each other on that. And when we have hearings where they don't show up, or they say, well, I have a hard stop and I have to leave, we're all busy. We all have important jobs, from our, you know, police municipal workers to our office workers. Every city employee has duties and tasks and responsibilities and timelines and are expected to be places. But when we need you here in the council to address important issues, I expect that they come and that we, as the chair and this body, set the format of the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and thank the maker. I think this is an excellent filing. The conversation around processes in terms of hearings and making it more engaging from the community perspective as well as from us is very important. Also, I just wanted to like congratulate all of my colleagues. I think I often like wake, like rise with sort of like pain points and what to address, but I want to rise and actually say like kudos to all of you and including myself, who tries to make it in this job. Like you basically have to show up to hearings, you have to show up to events in the community. And I have risen before and I've said, hey, it's not cool not to show up to hearings. So I'm with Counsel Flynn on that. But at the same time, in more observation, for example, just now, we did have a family with disability in the chamber, and I'm only stating that because I'm actually familiar with this. I've met them before. So I can actually say that it is disability because I've confirmed before. And then I noticed that Council President then sent her Chief of Staff to go talk to them, to welcome them and to make them feel welcome. So if you observe and you look around, and you'll see people making different moves and trying to accommodate different people. So sometimes it's because we don't have the full perspective, and sometimes it is because people may be being new, not necessarily managing and navigating the schedule. And then I am going to speak for myself. I've had the assumption that, oh, well, people are not showing up, not cool. The conversation is not as robust, as thorough as I would like it to be. Or from the administrative perspective, to Counsel Murphy's point, if they don't show up, or if they show up half the time, then the assumption of ill intent, sometimes it's natural for us as human beings. But then also, are we, have we had conversations and built those relationships to understand the real reasons why people are doing that. So we're all right when we say people are not showing up. We're all right when we say administration is not showing up, and that's not okay. Then it poses the question of what, what, what is the problem? What needs to happen? Where are the kinks? How do we fix it? So through this conversation, hopefully, we'll be able to allow each other grace and patience and look at the processes and see if we can implement some protocols. Hopefully, they're just tools or temporary, then we can revise. And then with, with the idea in mind, leaving room for error, that we're not, it's not going to be perfect at first. And maybe as we go, we start evolving the process. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to echo a lot of the comments of my colleagues. Thank you. I think that I also want to, this also implicates central staff. So I want to thank central staff for the incredible work that you do all the time to make sure that, you know, we're able to hold hearings and meetings oftentimes that are running long. But I think that so many of my colleagues, there are so many things to do in this job. And so I just want to alivate and say thank you to my colleagues for just taking the work seriously, for showing up, and for representing our constituents the way that we do. So if, and if no one else would like to speak on this matter, would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, would you please add Counselors Braden, Durkin, Fernando Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0420, will be referred to the Committee on Rules Administration. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0421?
Docket number 0421, Counselors Murphy and Flynn offer the following. Order for a hearing to discuss public safety and police staffing in Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I filed this hearing order, a discussion on public safety and police staffing in Boston, because ensuring the safety of our residents and visitors should never be a question of whether we have enough offices to do the job. Yet, that is exactly the situation we are facing. Boston police staffing levels are down 135 offices compared to last year. And despite recruitment efforts, our offices are stretched thin, overworked, and increasingly being asked to do more with less. This is not a new issue, but its impact is becoming more evident, especially when it comes to securing large public events, events that define our city and should not come with the risk of inadequate police coverage. Take, for example, the upcoming Allied War Veterans Council Parade in March, the St. Patrick's Day Parade in South Boston. Even with a full department-wide call-up, BPD does not believe it has enough offices to safely staff the event. As a result, the city will have to lean heavily on Massachusetts State Police and surrounding municipal police forces to fill the gaps. While BPD has always maintained strong relationships with other departments, our growing reliance on outside agency raises serious concerns about Boston's long-term public safety strategy, the financial burden it has on the city, and the well-being of our offices. This hearing is not just about one event. It's about the bigger picture. And I believe we need to ask, what is the city's long-term plan to address police staffing shortages? How do these shortages impact response times, crime prevention, and emergency preparedness? What are the financial and logistical consequences of increasingly depending on external agencies? And at a previous hearing I sponsored along with Counselor Flynn and Counselor Peppin on first responder protocols at large events, the administration failed to send the appropriate officials to answer these critical public safety questions. We cannot afford that kind of negligence again. Boston deserves clearances, a strategic plan, and most importantly, a fully-staffed police force that is equipped to keep our city safe. I look forward to hearing from BPD leadership, city officials, and all stakeholders as we examine how to strengthen our public safety resources and better support our offices. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counsel Murphy, for adding me. Over the past several years, I have consistently advocated for hiring hundreds of additional police officers every year for the next decade to address longstanding issues of understaffing, overstretched resources, forced overtime for Boston police officers, as well as looming retirements. Last year, Counsel Murphy mentioned, we held a hearing to discuss police department staffing levels, as this issue has a major impact on public safety in our city. Police understaffing in recent years means that current officers are mandated to fill in the gaps with forced overtime, which has led to burnout in offices, taking a physical and emotional toll on our officers and their families. We must foster an environment that allows officers to feel valued while building a strong relationship with residents through community policing. Having sufficient police staffing levels is critical to help make the streets of Boston safe for all neighbors, to improve the health and quality of life for our dedicated police officers as well. In my opinion, it is not okay for officers to be mandated to work excessive hours. It is critical that Boston Police Department consistently recruit and retain police officers. This is a public health and public safety crisis that we need to address. Just last week, as Counsel Murphy mentioned, at a meeting with law enforcement, city-state, federal partners, in advance of the evacuation day planning, since March of last year, I have held a monthly virtual meeting with key stakeholders about public safety issues relating to the evacuation day parade, how we move forward. It was revealed by the deputy superintendent that was on the meeting that Boston places down 135 offices compared to last year, the same time last year. That's a significant stat to my fellow colleagues. 135 less Boston police officers right now compared to last year is significant. We need to incentivize, incentivize ways to not only recruit more police officers for those reasons, but also so that our existing police force has a work-life balance that can take care of their families, that they are rested when they're on the streets in difficult situations. We were here at the city council a week ago, and I think we were here till nine o'clock, and we were all tired. And I was tired as well. But imagine doing that consistently five days a week, being out on the streets as a police officer in very hazardous, difficult circumstances. When a police officer makes a mistake after working 16 hours, will this body, will this city council body support that police officer if he or she makes a minor mistake? I don't think so. So why put them in that position to begin with? Let's acknowledge we have a significant public safety crisis on our hands with so few, with so few police officers. Let's not set them up for failure. Let's do all we can to hire more police officers, retain the police officers that are currently here, support their families, and be respectful to them as well and their families. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Durkin, Fernando Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mahia, Peppin, Weber, please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0421, will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0422?
Docket number 0422, Counselor Murphy, offer the following. Order for a hearing to discuss the immediate reinstatement of unsustainable funding for the community syringe redemption program.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to add Counselor Fitzgerald.
Counsel Fitzgerald is so added. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I filed this hearing order to address the critical need for reinstating the community syringe redemption program known as CSRP in Boston. Since its launch in December 2020, the CSRP has played a vital role in enhancing public health and safety by collecting approximately 5 million syringes. However, following the conclusion of its federal pandemic recovery funding in June of 2024, the, the program was discontinued, leading to a noticeable increase in improperly discarded syringes across the city, posing significant risks to public health. While the Boston Public Health Commission continues to operate other syringe collection initiatives, the CSRP's unique approach, offering incentives for syringe returns, has proven exceptionally effective in reducing needle litter, litter and creating cleaner and safer spaces. Although community organizations like New Market Business Improvement District, the bid in New Market, and Sue Sullivan does an amazing job, have stepped into the, into, to address the gap left by the CSRP conclusion, the issue has spread well beyond the New Market area. What once was concentrated in the mass and CAS neighborhood is now a citywide concern, with improperly discarded syringes appearing across various neighborhoods. Recent data analyzed by the Boston Public Health Commission indicates a decline in overdose deaths at the beginning of this year compared to the same period last year, which is promising. However, the rise in improperly discarded syringes continues to pose a pressing public health challenge that we must address immediately. This hearing will focus on the impact of CSRP's closure on public safety and needle litter across Boston, the effectiveness of CSRP compared to other syringe collection efforts, funding options for the immediate reinstatement and long-term sustainability of CSRP. Like I said earlier, like many things, we're finding out good programs and implementations over the last few years. Many of them had been funded by temporary op-er funds that are gone now, federal funds. We're seeing it in our Boston school budget, where the ESER funds are no longer there. And so we do need to find a way to have long-term sustainability. We have the data, the evidence, and the support from community organizations to demonstrate that this program worked. The question now is how do we bring it back and ensure its continuation? The health and safety of Boston communities are a paramount concern, and I urge my fellow council members to support the reinstatement and sustainable funding of the community syringe redemption program. By doing so, we can continue to protect our residents, safeguard our public spaces, and maintain the public health standards that our city deserves and all of our residents in every neighborhood across the city deserves.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to Counsel Murphy for allowing me to co-sponsor along with you on this bill. Very similar to what Counsel Murphy just said roughly a year ago, the community syringe redemption program lost its city funding. The onus of the needle pickup is placed squarely on the New Market Bid Back to Work Program, a great program ran by Sue Sullivan, where recovering addicts are paid hourly to clean up needles as their job and put them on a good path with good habits. However, with the recent crackdowns on mass and CAS, we have seen issues of needles spread beyond the boundaries of the Back to Work Program. It has spread their, the Back to Work Program area of concentration thin. These active users now scattered throughout various parts of the city are discarding needles where the Back to Work Program cannot reach. The model of the CSRP, where active users are incentivized to pick up after themselves, was effective, and we believe this program should be reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Could I suspend Rule 12 and add?
One moment. Okay. Counsel, Counsel Murphy?
Yes. Could I suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Flynn as an original co-sponsor?
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Murphy. Please suspend the rules. Add Counsel Flynn as the third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counsel Flynn is so added. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counsel Murphy and Counselor Fitzgerald for including me. I know that the CSRP program was working. It was working well. The people that were employed there did a tremendous job. They were professional. They picked up the needles. They properly discarded them. It wasn't just at mass and CAS. It was other areas as well. With mass and CAS being, the, being expanded, the drug situation is now happening throughout many neighborhoods of Boston, including almost every neighborhood in District Two that I represent, including Andrews Square, which is right down the road from my house. We also see discarded needles throughout Chinatown. We see them in downtown Boston that I represent. We see them on Boston Common. We see them throughout the South End as well, other areas in Roxbury as well. But I guess my point is, the program is working. It worked effectively. I spoke with the team that worked on this, on this program recently, two weeks ago, and they, they want to work. They're desperate to work. They want to contribute to the city. They were professional. They did a tremendous job, and the city cut the program. Well, now it's budget time. Is this a priority for us as city councilors to ensure we provide safe and healthy neighborhoods, and that includes picking up discarded needles? I think, I think it's worth the fight. I think it's worth it to have these dedicated and professional workers on the streets providing critical services. They're professional. The results are exceptional as well. Let's give them an opportunity to get back to work. These are the programs that should not be cut. They should be expanded. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I just want to say I agree with my colleagues. I think the CSRP program was an incredible program that lost funding due to ARPA, and happy to fight alongside all of my colleagues in the budget for us to add money to the budget so that we can fund this program. It is critically important. We have too many residents who are complaining, and it also brings a lot of dignity to those who are struggling in recovery. So I think it was a great program. Look forward to hearing from the Boston Public Health Commission, from others, to hear from the New Market Bid, to bring in a NUBIAN task force, to really think about why this is something that we should support and expand. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Durkin, Fernando Anderson, Mahia, Peppin, Santana, Weber, please have the chair. This docket, docket number 0422, will be referred to the Committee on Public Health, Homelessness, and Recovery. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0423?
Docket number 0423, Counselor Murphy, offer the following. Order for a hearing to review the effectiveness of speed humps in Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think all of us can say with our emails, texts, phone calls into our offices that speed humps have become the new rodent rat calls that we're getting. Lots of neighbors want to know when their streets, when their neighborhoods are going to get them. But I filed this hearing order to address the ongoing issue of speed humps and their effectiveness in our neighborhoods. Recently, the city of Boston conducted an engineering review of the speed humps on Allendale Street, following community feedback that they were not functioning as intended. As a result, the speed humps were removed. This situation highlights the need for a comprehensive and transparent approach to evaluating traffic calming measures in our city. I think it's also another example about the cameras on the school buses. When cars, when we need speed humps on all our streets, it means that cars are speeding. And if we just enforce that, we pull people over and gave them tickets for speeding on our streets, we may not need the speed humps. But while speed humps are designed to improve safety... But while speed humps are designed to improve safety, they are not a one-size-fits-all solution. It is essential that we continuously assess their impact, especially in the context of community feedback. We must ensure that the measures we implement actually address the concerns of residents while maintaining the overall safety of our streets. This hearing will provide an opportunity to discuss the effectiveness of speed humps as a traffic safety measure, the process by which the city collects and responds to the community feedback, the potential for other traffic calming measures that might be more suitable for certain neighborhoods, and how we can improve communication between residents and the city to ensure that public safety initiatives meet the needs of the communities. I look forward to the hearing from city officials, residents, and traffic experts as we work together to improve safety on our streets and ensure that our communities' voices are heard in the process. I would like to add Counselor Flynn, and if I can suspend Rule 12 and also add Counselor Peppin to this hearing order, please.
Thank you. Counselor Flynn is as, is added as a second original co-sponsor. Counselor Murphy seeks to suspend the rules to add counselors, to add Counselor Peppin as the third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Peppin is so added. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since I became, since I became a city council over seven years ago, I have talked about and focused on the issue of pedestrian, pedestrian safety. In 2018, I offered a twelve-point plan following a tragic crash where a beautiful little boy lost his life on L Street in South Boston. My plan included speed humps, raised crosswalks, pedestrian islands with rapid flash beacons, curb extensions, and other traffic calming infrastructure. In my opinion, speeding cars are a public health crisis. Everyone is in a rush. We have, we have had so much growth. We have had so many communities cutting through our neighbors, neighborhoods, and so many Ubers and Lifts that are unfamiliar with our streets. We have mopeds, dirt bikes, scooters, electric bikes, and bikes going through stop signs, red lights the wrong way on one-way streets, and maneuvering cars, through cars in front of them as red lights turn green. It can't be the Wild West any longer. I know that the city has implemented the speed hump program, the safety surge, with the best of intentions, but in my opinion, it was implemented in the exact opposite way it should have been. Traffic calming infrastructure should have been placed on main streets, commercial roads, high-traffic corridors, and bus routes. These are our busy areas and where the majority of vehicle traffic and foot traffic come in conflict with each other. That's common sense. When you go to other states or even municipalities here in the state, like Quincy, at Quincy Center, for example, you see raised crosswalks on the main roads in commercial areas. Again, that makes sense because that is where the majority of vehicles and pedestrian foot traffic is. You want residents and visitors to feel safe coming, crossing the road in a shopping district, going to a ball field, or outside to a senior center. Instead of putting a few of these raised crosswalks or speed humps in pedestrian islands on the streets in strategic spots of high foot traffic, the city put zones and dozens of, dozens of them on side streets. You could have put them at a crosswalk of heavy foot traffic on a main street like Walgreens and Stop &amp; Shop on East Broadway in South Boston, or M Street and N Street, where parents and kids cross Broadway or go to Meadowlawn Park and cross in cars and buses often speed up and down a hill. You could put them on Dorchester Street, across in the Marion Manor. In my opinion, the city did it this way currently because BTD continues to implement a combination of road diets and bike lanes across the city on our main streets and commercial corridors. When cars become frustrated with the traffic, they cut through side streets they had previously never been to, and they do not slow down. The city will say they need to right-size the road, but almost seven years after a tragic accident on L Street, which we all know is one of the most narrow roads in the city of Boston, cars continue to fly up and down the street with excessive speed. A speed feedback sign may say twenty miles per hour today, but that does nothing to make that car go slower. Daygliding these intersections only helps residents see that the car coming from the highway are going very fast. The narrow road doesn't encourage slower driving just because it's narrower. Residents only cross at a red light. Chief Franklin Hodge said that they can't implement raised traffic calming on high-traffic roads because of first responders. However, at a city council hearing last year, the Boston Fire Commissioner informed us that is not an issue. And again, the City of Quincy, Newton, Newport, Rhode Island, we all see raised traffic calming infrastructure on high-traffic roads.
Thank you, Counsel. Just if you, it beeped a while ago, so just if you could wrap it up, that'd be great. Thank you.
In the final analysis, this is a choice the city is making, to implement a one-size-fits-all approach of road diets and bike lanes on high-traffic corridors over raised traffic calming infrastructure to slow speeding cars instead of compromising with bike lanes or alternative roads. When the city implemented both a bus lane and a bike lane on Boylston Street last summer without community process for neighbors and back-bay businesses, a Globe editorial written by Brian McGuire said it best, "It's like someone is trying to prove a point." I want to be clear. Residents and businesses aren't saying cyclists don't matter. They do. But neighbors and businesses are also saying we need to plan to have enough road space for our brave first responders in the event of an emergency like a fire, or a heart attack, or during a snowstorm, that we are mindful of the difficulties of small businesses to unload products, and so that delivery drivers get their goods to a particular restaurant or business. Parents with strollers just want to be able to cross the street safely. The city is struggling with infrastructure and transportation-related issues. We are making it more difficult with these choices that leave out neighbors and businesses with decades of institutional knowledges during the planning process.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I thank Counselor Murphy for bringing this to the table. I wanted to be a third co-sponsor just because in my district, there is a lot of appetite for speed humps, and I'm a big supporter of it, and I believe that we need to have conversations of how the locations are chosen. My district is one district that is get more for last, and I just want to make sure that my residents get an answer as to when we are going to get the speed humps that are requested. One of the streets in Roswell, Glendower Road and Cornell Street are two streets that have been asking for speed humps for quite a bit, and I just want to make sure that we are providing some answers to them. And yeah, that's why I wanted to be part of this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peppin. The chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Counselor Murphy for once again bringing this forward. I would, we would love to have speed bumps in District Nine. The safety surge will not get to us until financial year twenty-six, so we're expecting it any day now. So we, we can't complain about speed bumps because we don't have them. We have a lot of, a lot of the issues already mentioned, like cut-through traffic driven by ways. We have a residential side street that, when we did the Alston-Brighton Mobility Study in twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, it's a one-way street that cuts through from Newton. Drivers, and they're still doing it forty miles an hour down a quiet residential street. It's the fastest, was the fastest street in, in, in Alston-Brighton, which is quite astounding because when cars lose control, the driver lose control on a, on a slight bend, they're writing off three and four cars in one, one incident. So I think with this question is like really, our primary concern is to increase the safety for all of our road users, bicyclists, pedestrians, and drivers. And we need to explore all the different tools that we have for traffic calming. I don't think we're using the full bandwidth that is possible. I think raised crosswalks, when you, when you go to Newton, I know you don't go to Newton, you cross over into Brookline, they have raised crosswalks periodically and along Winchester Street that connects Alston-Brighton with Coolidge Corner, and it's a very effective way to slow down traffic on a, on a very busy, very fast stretch of road, the street. So I think we need to just really encourage, again, the big issue is, is finances and capital, and the capital investment is significant, but we really do need to try and see, identify areas and try and get a more equitable approach across the whole city because we were, we are begging for cross, speed bumps in Alston-Brighton, and we're still waiting. I'm sure other people have had them for a while, but I think trying to use all the tools in the box. The other thing that happens is when we have a big development, they make a commitment to build raised crosswalks and traffic calming in the vicinity of the, of the development. But if the development stalls, it gets approval, but it never gets built for years, then the neighborhood is left waiting for years to have that investment in our local pedestrian infrastructure in the neighborhood. So all of these things contribute to the situation we find ourselves in. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As a parent, there really is no bigger fear for myself personally anyway than vehicles when it comes to the safety of our children, as we talked about earlier. But two quick tidbits on this. One, I think it's something I've tried to advocate for internally, but I think, especially for a district city councilor, but all of us as councilors should be able to submit to BTD a list of about twenty streets. Us who are on the ground know the cut-throughs, know where people speed, know which corners are accidental or not, and advocate to be proactive on those by handing in a list of streets that they could perhaps do before they do it. I know they do it in zones when they put them out there, but if we're able to just say, hey, get these streets first, these are the main offenders, I think people, the community would feel heard, and again, we're being proactive about a situation. And the second thing is, I know that there is the emergency vehicle issue. I just thought I'd point this out now more for the hearing, but there is a way to do it where you can make the areas that are the width of an emergency vehicle allowed and the speed bump is still effective for a regular car. And so emergency vehicles can try and at least drive through where some of that safety issue is measured. So just thought I'd bring that up now, it might be worth it. But thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President. I know this is such an important conversation and that there was a similar filing last week, so as the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, I just wanted to share that I will plan to put these two conversations about speed humps together. This conversation couldn't be more important to me. There was a constituent hit in Mission Hill where there had been speed humps requested, and I had just fought to get four speed humps put into development mitigation for a particular project. And then yesterday, saw the video of the constituent that was hit at a high speed in Mission Hill. So I, oftentimes, when constituents are raising the alarm, they're raising it because they see it on the daily and they see it on the ground. So I think this is such an important conversation, and I can't wait to convene it in my committee.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Oh, the chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. Well, you know, I think as Counselor Murphy mentioned, Allendale Road sort of triggered this, at least in part, this conversation. Allendale's in my district and I think illustrates the challenges of this issue. Everyone in our district, or I think across the city, wants safe roads and is advocated for speed humps. They went in at Allendale, and there was an outcry about how many speed humps and the size of the speed humps. I know State Rep. Bill McGregor and I advocated for a change, and, and my gratitude toward the Chief of Streets for quickly acting and removing the speed humps, of course, no surprise. They removed the speed humps about eight AM on Saturday. By eight-thirty, I had a few emails saying, where are the speed humps? Where, we missed the speed humps? So I think it's, I, I hear Counselor Fitzgerald's point about how we should get involved. It just, you know, I think be careful what you wish for. It's going to be, you know, there's, there's going to be a lot of opinions and, you know, but I think in the end, we can all agree we want safer streets and speed humps is part of the answer for how we can do that. So I thank you to Counselor Murphy for the filing. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Durkin, Fernandez-Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mahia, Santana, Weber, please add the chair. This docket, docket number zero four two three, will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number zero four two four?
Document number zero four two four, Counselor Murphy, offer the following. Order for a hearing to assess the environmental impacts of the proposed White Stadium redevelopment on Franklin Park.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I filed this hearing order assessing the environmental impacts of the proposed White Stadium redevelopment in Franklin Park because this is not a hypothetical discussion about future development. This is an active project with rail plans already in motion, and the environmental consequences are too significant to be overlooked. Franklin Park is the crown jewel of Boston's Emerald Necklace, a space designed by Frederick Law Olmsted to serve as a natural refuge for all residents, not just a backdrop for private interests. The city has proposed a major redevelopment of White Stadium through a public-private partnership. And while investment in athletics in Boston Public Schools is important, we must ensure that it does not come at the expense of our city's largest and most historic park. This project will remove approximately one hundred and forty-five mature trees, threatening the park's tree canopy, air quality, and natural ecosystems. It also includes expanded infrastructure, increased paving, and potential new parking facilities, all of which could alter the park's character, disrupt habitats, and reduce public accessibility. Unlike broader discussions about development in green spaces, this project is already moving forward. That is why a standalone hearing is necessary to directly address the environmental impact of the White Stadium redevelopment before irreversible damage is done. This is our chance to hold the administration accountable, ensure transparency, and make sure that any changes to Franklin Park align with our city's climate and sustainability goals. We need answers. What is the plan to mitigate these environmental harms? How will we compensate for the loss of mature trees? What measures will protect the park's landscape's wildlife and long-term health? And most importantly, is there an alternative approach that meets community needs without sacrificing our public green space? This hearing is about ensuring that Franklin Park remains, remains a park first and foremost, open, accessible, and protected for all who rely on it. I look forward to hearing from city officials, environmental experts, and the community as we examine this project in detail and fight for the responsible stewardship of our public lands. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add counselors, Braden, Fernandez-Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Peppin, Weber, please add the chair. This docket, docket number zero four two five, will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Oh, zero four two four. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number zero four two five?
Document number zero four two five, Counselor Murphy, offer the following. Order for a hearing on the environmental preservation of Boston's historical parks and green spaces.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I filed this hearing order, the environmental preservation of Boston's historical parks and green spaces, because this conversation is long overdue. Boston parks are more than just open spaces. They are essential to our city's environmental health, cultural history, and community well-being. Our Parks Department manages two hundred and seventeen city parks and playgrounds and oversees two thousand three hundred and forty-six acres of land and green space, from Franklin Park and the Emerald Necklace to the Boston Common and all of the neighborhood parks. These spaces belong to the people, and it is our responsibility to protect them. Recent development proposals, including the planned redevelopment of White Stadium, have raised serious concerns about transparency, environmental impact, and the future of public-private partnerships in our green spaces. This is not just about one project, it's about the precedent we set for the future of all parks across our city. If we allow public land to be handed over without proper accountability, what stops it from happening again in another historic park? We have heard from residents, advocates, and environmental experts who are deeply concerned about the loss of mature trees, reduced public access, and long-term environmental consequences. This hearing is not about resisting change, but about ensuring that any development prioritizes sustainability, public access, and transparency. We must ensure that improvements in our parks benefit the people first and foremost and not private interests. Boston has committed to climate resilience, environmental justice, and equitable public spaces. This hearing is an opportunity to ensure that future development aligns with those values, respects the character of our public spaces, and remains centered on the needs of our residents. I look forward to hearing from city officials, community members, and advocates as we explore ways to strengthen policies that preserve, protect, and prioritize public green spaces for generations to come. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add councilors Braden, Durkin, Fernandez, Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Pepe, Santana, Weber, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0425, will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0426?
Docket number 0426, Counselor Flynn offered the following. Resolution recognizing January as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I know Counsel Coletta is not here. I did commit to adding her as an original sponsor, but I don't think I'm able to do that since she's not here. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. Also, Madam Chair, I'd like to add Counsel Mahia as an original co-sponsor.
Counsel Mahia, so added.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This past January was National Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Human trafficking, also known as modern slavery, includes forced labor and sex trafficking. This is an issue that is difficult to combat due to lack of public awareness and government oversight and low rates of reporting. Instability caused by natural disasters, conflicts of war, have also contributed to this worldwide, in throughout the United States also. In 2010, President Barack Obama declared January as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month to raise awareness about human trafficking and to educate the public about how to identify and prevent this crime. At the local and state level, there are resources to prevent and combat human trafficking. The City of Boston's collaborative efforts against sexual exploitation cease. The program works to prevent and address commercial sexual exploitation and human trafficking. The Attorney General's Office also has a human trafficking division as well. On National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, it is critical that we recognize survivors of human trafficking, support the work of anti-trafficking organization, city, state, federal law enforcement, including our Boston Police, our Massachusetts State Police as well, to support advocates, businesses, and those who are committed to raising awareness of and ending human trafficking. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for a point of clarification, I believe if I'm correct, I'm going to look to you because you know all the rules, that if, in order to, you could be added as a second co-sponsor if you're not here, it's only when you're not here, it's for the suspended pass for the third original code.
No, you can be added as a, you can only be added, if your name was already on the docket, you could remain as a second.
Which it was, right?
Counselor Coletta Zapata's name is not here, and therefore she cannot be added in today's meeting. If she were already on it, she could remain on it.
It wasn't on. Were you tricking me? I know, I was advocating for Counsel Coletta, but I thought she was already written on there. Okay, sorry. That's what happens when I stand up to speak for other people, but anyways, I just want to thank my colleague for adding me as an original co-sponsor. A lot of the work that our office has been doing was, and I'll just name this person, Ziva Kramer, who taught me a lot about this particular issue and really helping us understand how we on the council could be better served on making sure that we're creating spaces and places that are safe for folks who are afraid. I know there are a lot of folks who are from, you know, who don't speak English, who are undocumented, who oftentimes are the ones on the other side of this conversation that are the ones who are bearing the brunt of this. So I just thank my colleague for his advocacy in the space. And I know it's February, and this was in January, but I think every month should be on our radar in regards to this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Flynn, for offering this resolution. I agree with Counsel Mahia that every month should be Human Trafficking Prevention Month. I think Counsel Mahia just referenced that, you know, the situations in which our undocumented workers find themselves, sometimes they're brought here specifically to work. Their passage may be paid, they're brought here, and they live in people's homes, taking care of their children, and doing domestic work, but they may be underpaid or not paid at all. Their passports are taken away, they have no access to the outside world, and they're basically prisoners in the homes that they're working in. I know our colleague, former colleague Counselor Lydia Edwards, now Senator Edwards, did some work about domestic workers and their rights as well, and this is a particular sort of sector. Surprise, surprise, right, it's right all in our neighborhoods, right within sight of my house in Oak Square, there was a massage parlor that was, human trafficking was happening there, right under our noses. We didn't know what was happening. And again, it was a group of Asian women who had their passports taken away, and they were pushed into sex trafficking activity, sex trafficking. And they had no recourse and very difficult, very difficult situation, and it was very difficult for them to get out of. The other thing to recognize is that on big championship, like Super Bowl weekends, et cetera, that the traffickers actually bring women and children as well to venues close to these big sports facilities, sports events, and again, are sex trafficking, children and women, and in ways that goes sort of beyond, underneath the radar. So there's a lot of awareness there, and again, our people are very, very vulnerable to sort of entrapment and due to predatory behaviors on social media. So there's a lot of work to do in this space, and thank you, Counsel Flynn, for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I'll be very brief. I know I mentioned Counsel Coletta. She has done excellent work supporting survivors of human trafficking for many years, so I wanted to recognize Counsel Coletta. I also wanted to recognize our former colleague, Counsel Campbell, Mass. Attorney General Campbell, for the work she's done supporting survivors as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say that, you know, this is hugely important. I was just yesterday talking to one of our police captains who's talking about an increase of this in our city, and so we have to do everything we can to combat human trafficking, ensure resources of people so that they know how to take out of this issue. Because I think Counsel Braden said it was happening right under our noses, and we didn't even know, and I often think that's how human trafficking presents itself. It's happening under our noses, and we don't know, so.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add councilors Braden, Durkin, Fernandez, Anderson, Fitzgerald, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, please add the chair. Councilors Flynn and Mahia's expansion of the rules and adoption of this resolution. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Okay, now if anybody would like to add their name to a docket when they were out of chambers, now is the time to do so. If I see any lights that are on, the chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, my name may just be added to docket number 0421. I believe that was Counsel Murphy's public safety hearing order. Thank you.
Thank you. You got that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to be added to docket, docket 0421 and 0422.
You got that, Mr. Clerk? Just give a thumbs up when you're good to go.
Those were communications.
0421 and 0422?
Yes.
Yeah. Those were dockets, both of them Counsel Murphy's dockets. 0421 and 0422. One is in public safety, 0421 in public safety, 0422 in public health.
Yep.
You got it, Mr. Clerk? Okay, awesome. Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you. Clerk 0413, could I add my name, please, and thank you, 0413.
Thank you. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor. Sorry, now you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, 0411, 0412. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Durkin?
0414. Oh, and 0416.
You good, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Are you good?
Yep.
Okay, great. All good? Okay. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
Personnel orders, docket number 0427, Counsel Louie Yan for Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
The chair moves through passage of docket number 0427. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you, the personnel orders have passed. We're now moving on to green sheets. Does anyone have anything to pull from the green sheets? The chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. You know, so this is for the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency?
Oh, we may have it, just, just, could you please read what docket it is?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, docket 103, 0103.
Okay, docket number 0103. Mr. Clerk, do you have that docket?
Yes.
Could you please read that docket into the record?
From the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency, and Parks, docket number 0103. Message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $456,500 in the form of a grant for fiscal year 25 MVP Action Grant awarded by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to be administered by the Environment Department. The grant will fund the permits and metals for the project in fiscal year 26 with the goal of completing the MEPA permitting process and submitting permits to other applicable local, state, and federal permitting agencies.
Thank you. Absent objection? I want to make sure, and none of the lights on are free objections? Okay. Absent objection, the motion of the committee vice chair with the consent of the committee chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm pulling this on behalf of Chair Coletta Zapata, and so this docket is to accept and expend its $456,500. So just a brief background, you know, it was awarded by the Commonwealth to be administered by the city's Office of Climate Resilience. The grant will fund technical consultant services for 50% design and engineering of a coastal resilience project along Bennington Street in East Boston and Fredericks Park and Revere, which will contribute to near- and long-term flood protection for both communities along the MBTA Blue Line. Since 2021, the cities of Boston Revere have been participating in a multi-year municipal vulnerability preparedness-funded study to assess the current and future impacts of flooding and coastal storms on the Belle Isle Marsh and its adjacent communities, and to evaluate potential flood risk reduction strategies and marsh restoration efforts. The study of Belle Isle Marsh identified preliminary nature-based and hybrid solutions that prevent flood damage to the neighboring communities and the Blue Line, promote public safety, and enhance and extend the habitat value of Belle Isle Marsh based on the Massachusetts Coastal Flood Risk Model flood projections for 2070. Additionally, the City of Boston's Climate Ready Boston Initiative completed the Coastal Resilience Solutions for East Boston Plan in 2022, which identified this area as a near-term priority for coastal resilience due to the extreme flood risk to the East Boston neighborhood. We received notice of this grant in August of 2024, but were not informed until just recently that the grant expires at the end of June 2025. So, you know, on behalf of the chair, I'm bringing this, seeking passage of this docket today without a hearing so we can allow the use of this money. We've been informed that, you know, any delay would negatively impact the project, so just trying to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. Okay, is anyone looking to speak on this matter? No? Okay. Counsel Weber seeks passage of this docket, docket number, I didn't write the number down.
0103.
0103. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Okay, the chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a few dockets that I would like to pull, for it to be exact, but starting with the first one is docket number 0239.
Okay, docket number 0239. Mr. Clerk, could you please read that docket into the record?
Can I read all of them at the same time?
Oh, he has four, okay.
Yeah.
Can you read them into the rec, yes, you can read them into the record at the?
Want me to say them all?
Are you, are you, is your intention to speak on them at the same time as well, or are you speaking on them individually?
Speaking individually is to give my colleagues the time to make information.
Okay. But, Mr. Clerk, let's just read them one by one.
Doc, from the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 0239. Message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $500,000 in the form of a grant for fiscal year 25 Training Academy earmark awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Fire Services to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund the purchase of equipment and supplies and to fund training initiatives for the Boston Fire Training Academy to ensure the department remains current in the firefighting services.
Okay, absent objection, the, is that, is that an objection?
No.
No, okay. Abs, okay, if it is no objection, absent objection, the motion of the committee chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. If you, if you want the next docket, and then the clerk can read that into the record, and then you can speak on them all together.
Oh, okay. Docket number 0118.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0118 into the record?
From the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 0118. Message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $395,746 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 24 Burn Justice Assistance Grant awarded by the United States Department of Justice to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund a domestic violence management analyst at the Family Justice Center, a hub and center of responsibility coordinator, and a technology coordinator for multiple data collection, reporting, and record management systems.
Okay. Absent objection, the motion of the committee chair is accepted, and the docket is properly before the body. If you have an objection, it's, I'm just going to send it to committee. If there's an objection, it's getting.
Point of order, then, also.
A point of order is a dispute on the rules.
That's right.
Okay. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy.
I know this will be my fourth time now, so I guess I'll file it differently, maybe as a policy brief or a hearing order, but I have asked three times to you as the president that if colleagues are going to be pulling from the green sheets, and if you are aware of it beforehand, that we all get that information beforehand, because all of us learn differently, we process differently, and for hearing people reading it and trying to figure out what it is. And the timeline of objecting comes before we hear, so maybe after I hear the reason why, I may not object. So the timing of being able to object doesn't allow us that opportunity, and if we did have this information beforehand. So I'll ask again a fourth time to you, the council president, that if you could share that information with our colleagues so that we are prepared on these important dockets that come before us for a vote. I think a hearing on Belle Island, I know that the timing of it now would have been very informative and important. These hearings about the grants, about domestic violence, talking about staffing is something Counsel Flynn has been advocating and working for, for a long time, to make sure. He put a million dollars in amendments last year, and the administration did not put that towards staffing this department, so I think important conversations are necessary.
Thank you. I really, I've been encouraged, and I continue to encourage my colleagues, that, that if they have a green sheets poll, right, the rules are the rules, and so there wasn't an objection based on the rules. The rules are the rules, but if folks have, that they're going to pull green sheets, there have been folks, counselors who have been sending those out. I sometimes miss them, don't know what's getting pulled, so it's, if counselors are going to pull green sheets and want to share with their colleagues, I encourage them to do so. Okay, so that docket, absent objection, that docket is properly before the body. Mr. Clerk, could you, Counsel Santana, could you please read the next docket, the number, next docket into the record?
Yes, and it's a quick question to you, Council President.
Yep.
I actually, you know, I know Council Murphy has mentioned all of us being able to send it ahead of time. I know I sent it over to the Clerk's office before. I have it sent it to my council colleagues just because of like open meeting law. I don't, I don't know the rules about that stuff.
Right, exactly, yeah.
I want to clarify.
So we are trying to confirm what, what, and we will get, get back to you. But I do know that there are colleagues who have been sending that information out. And so there have been, sometimes I don't see them. Like, I didn't see, there was a green sheets poll last week that I didn't, like, there are often green sheets polls that I don't know about. But so. Okay. One moment, I just want to clarify. Mr. Clerk, where are we? That second docket? You read it? You read it into the record? There hasn't been an objection?
There wasn't.
Okay, there's an objection to docket number?
That was 023, no, 0118.
Okay, so there is an objection to docket number? Council Murphy, you objected to docket 0118? Okay. So there's been an objection to that docket, which means that we have to poll the committee. That's the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. The members are Santana, Worrell, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Mahia, and Fernandez Anderson. We will poll the committee as to whether the docket is properly before the body. So, Mr. Clerk, if you could please? But there was an objection, and so we have to go, there, there was, it was when Council Murphy spoke, she said there was an objection. Council, Mr. Clerk, if you could please?
What criminal, oh, Public Safety and?
And Criminal Justice.
The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
And just so that, this is a clarifying, a, a yes vote means a docket is properly before the body, and a no vote means it's not before the body and will be sent back to committee.
Council Santana?
Yes.
Councilor Worrell, Councilor Flynn, Council Murphy, Council Pepe, Council Mahia, and Council Fernandez Anderson. Majority is.
Thank you, the docket is properly before the body. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the next docket into the record?
I don't think I gave him the number.
He can give you the number.
Yes.
Docket number 0119?
Council Flynn, if you have a point of order, point of order? What is the point of order?
Madam Chair, the, it's, it's very difficult. I, I want to be helpful and support my colleague, but we have four dockets now that we don't know anything about. I, I, I come in here every day and, and want to learn about the Fire Department, what they're doing, how this $500,000 is impacting the residents. $400,000, how it's supporting survivors of domestic violence. I can't ask relevant questions based on a, a 10-second description of a grant. I, I want to learn more about it. I'm not doing my due diligence, being a rubber stamp and, and just supporting things, not knowing exactly what impact it is having in the neighborhoods of Boston. As you probably can tell, I'm frustrated. But we have to be here. We have to come into this body and, and, and have these hearings and discuss them, and have the appropriate city department heads and, and people that work on these grants on, on the front lines talking about them. I can't learn about what's happening with domestic violence issues based on a 20-second conversation. It's frustrating. Residents expect more from us than just being rubber stamps. I don't like being put in that situation where I'm just a rubber stamp, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Flynn, that is not a point of order. There was no, there was nothing based on the rules. So I just want to clarify that that was not a point of order, and I had a feeling that's what you were gonna say, which is why I did not call on you. It is, it is very, it is up to the Committee Chair to pull it. Anyone can object. We then poll the committee. If they are properly before the body, questions can be asked. Mr. Clerk, could you, did you give the third docket? Mr. Clerk? Yeah, once they are all either before the body or not properly before the body, open discussion for as long as people would like on the dockets. Council Santana, the third docket?
The third docket was the docket number 0119.
Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0119 into the record?
From the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 0119, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $150,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 22 COVID-19 SADV Trust Fund awarded by the Mass Department of Public Health to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund two full-time domestic violence advocates who will work with social service agency partners at the Boston Public Health Commission's Family Justice Center.
Thank you. Absent objection? Is there an objection? Okay. Absent objection, the motion of the Committee Chair is accepted and the docket is properly before the body. Mr. Counselor Santana, if you could read the fourth docket into the record?
Docket number 0240.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, could you please read that docket into the record?
From the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 0240, message and order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend for the benefit of the City of Boston a donation from the National Nuclear Security Administration's Office of Radiological Security of a 2024 GMC Sierra four-wheel-drive crew cab pickup valued at $60,233. The truck will be used as a radiologic, radiological security awareness and response support truck and will allow the Boston Police Department to continue the sustainment of R Sar training programs.
Okay, thank you. Absent objection? Are there any objections? The motion of the Committee Chair is accepted and the docket is properly before the body. Turn it over to Council Santana to talk about the dockets. Then it's open discussion, and me, who wants to speak on this docket, you may speak on the docket, you may vote for the docket, you may vote against the docket. Council Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna read, I'm gonna start with the docket 0239. I have statements for all four and information that I've gathered. So, thank you, Mr. Clerk, as well. So, starting with docket number 0239, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on all the FY25 and FY24 City of Boston grants administered by the Boston Fire Department on June 11, 2024. The Committee heard testimony from three BFD staff members, Kevin Coyne, who's a Deputy Commissioner, Administration and Finance, Julie, Julie Burton Devon, who's the Procurement and Grants Management, and Shawna Lynch, the Grants Manager. We were also joined by Councilors Murphy, Flynn, Fitzgerald, Durkin, Weber, and Coletta Zapata, and received a letter of absence from Pepe. The panel testified on each grant administered by BFD as well as grants trans, transfers his previous years. During the hearing, Julie Devon, Procurement and Grants Manager, testified specifically on this grant and explained that it is an annual non-competitive grant provided to municipalities and is earmarked by the state legislator. Ms. Devon also testified that the funds allocated to the City of Boston have been reduced in recent years due to reductions in the Commonwealth's budget. For the FY25, this grant is an amount of $500,000. I'll be holding a hearing soon in part of the year-over-year changes in the BFD grant amounts as discussed earlier during today's council meeting. And thank you again to my Vice Chair Worrell and Councilor Flynn for joining us as co-sponsors for the upcoming hearing. BFD has also provided the Committee with written information on this grant, which I have reviewed as Chair of the, of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, and which confirms and echoes the testimony the Committee heard in person during the hearing. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving this docket from the Committee to the full council for discussion and a formal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be that docket number 0239 ought to pass. I want to pause there before I go to the next one, if anyone has any questions or concerns. That was for, yeah, that was the fire one.
The Chair, Rec, Council Murphy, would you like to speak on this docket? Okay, thank you. Anybody like to speak on this docket? The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Chair, my recommendation going forward, this is a $500,000 grant to the Fire Department. We had members of the Fire Department, as I mentioned before, A&amp;F people, grant managers, but we don't have the people that speak on a specific grant and how it impacts the day-to-day operations, the operations of the men and women in, in the neighborhoods working. We, we are listening to professionals, and they're doing an excellent job, but they're grant writers, they're A&amp;F people, they're doing their best. But I like listening and learning about a particular grant from people on, on the scene, actually doing the day-to-day work and how it impacts public safety. That's how I become a better city councilor for my district. I'll, I'll listen to the A&amp;F director, and I, I'm not criticizing anybody, but we need to listen and ask questions to people on the scene so we know exactly what this grant is doing and what impact it's having. Provided limited information on this grant, and I'm gonna vote in favor of it.
Thank you, and I take your point, hear you out, Council Flynn. Council Santana, if you'd like to respond, you may. If not, if not, we'll just move to a vote on this, on this.
I would like to say, I respect my colleagues' remarks, and I'm gonna work closely with your office to make sure that those personnel are there this year. That was for the fire one. I know that the police one that I'm allowed to read into, we did have the proper personnel that you, you got to ask questions about, but that's part of the process, and I'm looking forward to be, being able to work with my council colleague to make that happen.
Okay, thank you. Council Santana, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, moves to passage of docket number 0239. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Which docket? Is it docket number 0240?
I'm gonna go with docket 0118 next.
Docket 0118.
Correct. Great. Thank you. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on Tuesday, December 10, 2024, to discuss 11 public safety grants administered by the Boston Police Department. The Committee heard testimony from nine members of the Boston Police Department, Lieutenant, or Lieutenant Peter Messina, Street Outreach Unit, Jenna Savage, Office of Research and Development, Superintendent Lenita Q. Lane, Bureau of Field Services, Kevin Lorardi, Director of Crime Lab, Forensics Quality Control, Sergeant Christopher Bailey from the Harbor Patrol Unit, Anthony Rizzo, Metro Boston Securing the Cities, Maria Chevers, Director of Research and Development, Captain Timothy Conley, and then Director Ryan Wash from the Boston Regional Intelligence Center. The Committee additionally heard testimony from two members of the Office of Emergency Management, Deputy Chief Matthew Kearney and Assistant Deputy Chief of Administration Andrew Blinars. We also were joined by my colleagues, Councilor Flynn, Councilor Murphy, Council Brayden, Councilor Fitzgerald, Council Weber, Council President Ruzy Loujean, and Councilor Coletta Zapata. The Committee also received a letter of absence from Council Pepe, Worrell, and Durkin. The Committee heard testimony from Director Chevers in discussion of the federal Burn Justice Assistance Grant to the City of Boston. She stated that this is an annual grant that the City receives from the Massachusetts Sex Offender Registry Board. This grant would fund the overtime and administrative costs associated with BPD officer visits to the, to the addresses that sex offenders know as their place of residence within Boston. In addition to testimony at the public hearing, the Committee also received detailed written testimony from the Boston Police Department on the FY24 grant, which I have reviewed as Chair. The FY24 grant will specifically fund providing support and analysis to culturally sensitive domestic violence advocates who provide advocacy to domestic violence victims at the district level and assist victims in navigating the criminal justice system and ensure they receive necessary services. Two, it providing ongoing research, development, and implementation of technology solutions, including digitizing cases from the year 2000 to the present and supporting other technology initiatives in the department, hiring a full-time coordinator to help take this highly successful intervention program to scale through the City of Boston. The budget items are specifically in the following amount: Personnel, there's about $291,117. For fringe, $68,652. And for indirect, $35,977. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving this docket from the Committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be that docket number 0118 ought to pass.
Thank you, Council Santana. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Through the chair, to the chair. Do you have the total of those grants for that docket?
Council Santana, if you, if you'd like to answer, you may. I think I have, for 0118, I have $395,000.
So.
Is that? Yep, okay, yep, that's the amount.
I am also frustrated. I mean, we just passed a resolution on national human trafficking. We've had many conversations over the years about the importance of having a standalone domestic violence committee, and I believe that that conversation is fueled just by the desire for us as a council to be a stronger advocate in this area. In my committee, Chair of Strong Women, Families, and Community, domestic violence is clearly listed in it. And I am happy to announce and inviting all my colleagues that tomorrow on docket 0293, I am holding the hearing on Violence Against Women's Act grant that was put into my committee. And the head of Sexual Assault Unit, Jose Texero, was invited, but I don't think he's coming. But Nicole will be here from the Justice Center to answer questions. She is an officer who can answer questions. And Jenna Savage also. So I'm encouraging my colleagues to be here tomorrow because we could ask questions about these other grants. It's important that we do understand the money coming in obviously translates to staffing, resources, programming, outreach, and it's the time we can ask, is it working? Can we do better? What else do we need to do as a council? And money is the one power we have, right? We can stop these grants and pause them and ask the questions we need and then pass them. And also one other question through the chair to Council Santana, is there a deadline on this one and the other ones that you were worried that it would expire?
Through the chair, Council Santana, if you'd like to answer, you may.
I don't think there's a specific deadline. I think, you know, obviously, we had that pause for 24 hours last or two weeks ago from the administration. Some of these are federally funded, but there's no.
So there's no, like, urgency worrying that it will run out if we don't pass it today?
Uh, yeah, so, you know, yeah, I'm not gonna.
Okay. I do just want to go on record that I feel like it's a missed opportunity, especially because we've had some, you know, conversations here on the council about how committed we are to women, domestic violence, crimes against women. And I think this sends a message that we're not as committed as we really are. So, thank you.
I do want to know, and I, I, I respect that, Council Murphy. I do want to know, we did have, you know, this hearing, which you also were, were present there. Wasn't at the middle of December. So I know the other one was in June, but this one would, just happened, you know, a month and a half ago.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to offer a brief couple of points. As a former probation officer at Suffolk Superior Court, I also helped supervise the returning citizens, and many of them had, many of them were required to register as, as sex offenders. And just so my colleagues are aware that if you are homeless, you are required to report to the Boston Police Department. I believe it's every, back then it was every 30 days or maybe, might be every 15 days. And then your probation officer would also need to do a verification check of your residence and your place of employment or training. And I know that was what some of this money is being used for. Also, the probation officer would, in fact, ensure that you are engaged in the necessary, not training, counseling. That might be part of the conditions of probation. So the probation officer plays a critical role working with the men and women of, of the Boston Police, including the Family Justice Center on violence against, violence against women, but also, as we discussed, sexual trafficking and domestic violence. So it's critical for the probation department and Boston Police to continue to work together to provide the safest communities possible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else that we're looking to speak on this matter? Council Santana, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice seeks passage of docket number 0118. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Docket number? Apologies, docket number?
Zero one one nine.
Okay, docket number is zero one one nine. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This COVID nineteen sexual assault domestic violence trust fund grant is COVID relief funding awarded by the Massachusetts Department of Health and was revisionally planned to be for just two years. Fortunately, the Commonwealth has extended this critical funding for a third year. The city council reviewed and approved the first two years of orders to accept and expand, expand these funds in the same amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each prior year, the same as the third year of funding. In addition to past testimony on this grant, the committee has received detailed written information from the Boston Police Department. My office has also been in direct contact with, with BPD about this grant, and as Chair, I extend my thanks to Maria Chevers, Director of the Research and Development for the Boston Police Department for assistance in providing further clarifying information about this grant, and my thanks as well for all of Director Chevers' great work on behalf of our city. This grant funds two time, two full-time domestic violence advocates who work in collaboration with BPD's various Families Justice Center partners to serve the neighborhoods of Roxbury, Matapan, and Dorchester. These partners are particularly well-equipped to assist in serving special populations such as the LGBTQ+, Black slash African American, Hispanic, Asian, and non-English speakers, all prevalent amongst the populations in Dorchester, Roxbury, and Matapan. The advocates are able to provide an off-site first response, which is decisive in determining how to, how domestic violence and sexual assault victims cope, first with the immediate crisis and later with their recovery from the crime. Due to limited victim assistance provided in local prosecutors' offices, a significant percentage of crime victims may not have victim assistance available to them unless they find a victim advocate within the police department like those funded by this grant. Director Chevers stated that after June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, this fund will end, and BPD's finance unit is working right now, as we speak, to figure out alternative sources of funding for these critical positions. I know that supporting victims of domestic violence and sexual assault is a major priority for this body, and as Chair, I am honored to serve alongside colleagues who are committed to addressing TV and NSA from all angles, including providing advocates for victims. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving this docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be that docket number zero one one nine ought to pass.
Thank you, Counselor Santana. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Counsel Santana. This is an issue I've worked on for eight years as a city council, but also prior to that as a probation officer as well. My, my question or comment to the, to the Chair would be, and I know you highlighted several neighborhoods, and it's critical that these neighborhoods receive the assistance, domestic violence, support for survivors. So my question, Mr. Chair, to the Chair is, how are we ensuring that survivors of domestic violence that do not speak English, how are they impacted by these funds, and how are they able to communicate with Boston Police so that they're able to get assistance, domestic violence support and assistance? And as we, as we know, many of the domestic violence facilities have really not publicized all that well for various safety reasons for the survivors, making it difficult for survivors to, to actually get services at times. But I just wanted to ask the Chair, how are we able to factor in those issues, but also at the same time ensuring survivors get the critical support that they, that they need?
Through the chair, Counsel Santana, if you'd like to respond, you may.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselor Flynn. So, yeah, you know, this is a one hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, as I mentioned, and it's, it's, it funds two full-time domestic violence advocates. Those two full-time domestic, domestic violence advocates are trained to serve multilingual residents and families.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Santana. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Just in response, do we know what languages that the domestic violence assistants speak other than English? How are they communicating with survivors and what other languages?
Counsel Santana, if you'd like to respond to the Chair, you may.
I can find that information for you, Counsel Flynn. I, I do not know specifically what languages. I know I have been told that these two full-time domestic violence advocates are trained to deal with and serve in these neighborhoods and deal with the populations in this neighborhood. They speak multiple languages, but I'm happy to give you those specific languages. Director Chevers has been very communicated with our office, so I'm, I'm sure she'll, she can get that information to us soon.
Thank, thank you, Counsel Santana.
Thank you, thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I could ask two questions through you to the Chair. Are you fine with it? Okay, just making sure. So one is, you mentioned, I think, that this funding is ending, so going forward? Is that true?
Through the chair, Counselor Santana, if you'd like to respond, you may.
Correct. Director Chevers, you know, told our office that June thirtieth, twenty twenty five of this year, this funding will end and that they're looking at other alternatives to continue this program.
So it's possible that it won't be, especially if we don't, okay.
As of right now, it won't be.
Yeah, it won't be, okay. A second question, and thank you to Maria. She obviously works closely with you. She's wonderful, and when she comes here to any of the police hearings, she does a wonderful job sharing the information. But I am requesting if you could send those descriptions that you've read to me. I don't want to speak on behalf of my colleagues. You may want to share it with all of us, but that would be helpful just to read through after this meeting with the information you have shared.
Absolutely. I'll have my team do that right now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Oh, the Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
So, thank you, Madam President. I just think that I, I don't know, there's lots of questions that were asked. I'm just, I think, I'd just like to offer a recommendation in terms of processes here. I think there was a lot of questions asked, and I think that if we're going to be asked to take votes, I think that we should be given advance notice on votes, particularly when we're talking about money. And I also think that, especially if it's not in a deadline or a timeline, that it's not a good practice to just put something on the floor from the green sheets just for a vote. I just, I just feel like, I feel like if we keep doing this, and it would just help me for consistency if we, if you could recommend some norms in terms of when we can pull something for the green sheet, if it's, if there's no deadline, if there's, you know, I just feel like if we just keep doing it, we're not going to set any standards, we're not going to be able to say, well, this was done this time, and then there are other times when it, people want to do it and we can't. So I just think for the sake of just being consistent, I just would offer that we figure out something that is normal, that we can all agree to.
Thank you, Counsel Mejia, yep. For the sake of consistency, just want to make it clear that during my first term, it was, the norm was, you pull from the green sheets and there, that was it. People pulled from the green sheets all the time. We had a green sheet pulled today earlier on a grant that was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. It, it, we suspend and pass, it happens. But happy to, you know, we're working and talking about what is possible, and some of the, some of my colleagues have made people aware. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson. You have the floor. Point of order on the rules. A point of order is disagreement on the rules.
But you just referenced a docket earlier.
Yes.
It isn't officially in the green sheets till after this hearing, correct? That that was what first introduced today?
So I said green sheets and I said suspend and pass. Like, we suspend, it's, it's, I said green sheets and suspend and pass. I understand yours was a suspend and pass.
Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Fernando Anderson, do you want to speak on this matter? I saw your light was on. Are you good? Okay. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I still do have one more. I also just want to make it clear, like, I mean, I respect all my colleagues' remarks and always willing to work with all my colleagues. I'm not pulling these out, like, these have been discussed. We have had hearings on this, so it's not like I'm, I'm pulling this out. I, I read the list of colleagues who were there and present, so I want to make sure that. I am hosting hearings on this because I've, I've listened from my colleagues, and, or I've heard from my colleagues that they want hearings on this. I've just tried to make it, instead of having a hundred hearings throughout the year and taking up all the space, I've had, you know, hearings where there's been multiple grants discussed. If there's an individual hearing, uh, grant, that's, you know, especially if it's controversial, if I know there's a lot of questions, I will host one specific hearing for that grant, but these grants have been discussed, so I'm looking forward to discussing more of this year.
Thank you, thank you, Counsel Santana. Okay, is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Counsel Santana seeks passage of docket number zero one one nine. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. And I believe that leaves us with, is that zero two four zero?
Correct, zero two four zero.
Okay, if you could read that into the record. I may not read that into the record. You have the floor to talk about.
Great, thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice received letter, received written testimony on this matter from both the Boston Police Department as well as the United States Department of Energy's Office of Radiological Security and the National Nuclear Security Administration. As Chair, I have reviewed this information in detail and conferred with the, with the police department, and I would like to share a brief summary of the purpose of this donated truck for use in Boston's radiological security awareness and response, also known as RSAR. From the testimony of Dan Amaran, Response Integration Program Manager for the Domestic Program in the Office of Radiological Security in the National Nuclear Security Administration. One of the greatest threats to our nation's security is the possibility of terrorists acquiring radioactive materials to construct a radiological dispersal device or dirty bomb. I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say, can say that, but the economic and social consequences from this type of weapon of mass destruction incident have the potential to be catastrophic, catastrophic, sorry, my accent and that word, can't. Yeah, thank you, Counsel Murphy. Protecting these materials from nefarious use in a terrorist incident remains one of the, our nation's top priorities. The Boston Police Department has also provided testimony stating that the BPD and the ORS have been partners for many years in working to prevent high-activity radioactive materials with the city of Boston from being used in acts of terrorism. BPD has hosted ORS and RSAR training programs and received training equipment to support its mission in preventing these materials from being used in terrorist attacks. The donation of this truck will assist and sustain the hazardous materials response units training programs and its efforts in combating this serious threat to our nation's security. There is no direct cost to the, to the BPD and this donation, and it's part of the nationwide program sponsored through the ORS. Mr. Amaran from the ORS further testified to continue the sustainment of the Boston Police Department Hazardous Materials Response Unit Training Program, ORS will provide BPD an RSAR support truck, specifically a twenty twenty-four GMC Sierra four-wheeled crew cab pickup, white in color. Once the truck is transferred, the RSAR support truck will be the sole property of BPD for its internal use. The Office of Radiological Security will not have any responsibility or claim on the RSAR support truck after the transfer. As Chair of the public, of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving this docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be that docket number zero two four zero ought to pass.
Thank you, Counsel Santana. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? Okay. Counsel Santana seeks passage of docket number zero two four zero. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. Okay, we are now moving on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are, oh, I'm sorry, it's additional green sheets pulled. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, can we pull page, on page from page one, docket zero one zero four?
Mr. Clerk, could you please read that docket into the record?
From the Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events, docket number zero one zero four. Message and not authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of three hundred and five thousand, six hundred dollars in form of a grant from the fiscal year twenty-five Local Cultural Council Program, awarded by the Massachusetts Cultural Council, to be administered by the Office of Arts and Culture. The grant will fund innovative arts, humanities, and interpretive science programming that enhance the quality of life in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, oh, okay, sorry. Absent objection? Is there any objection? Absent objection, the docket is properly before the body, the, the motion of the committee chair is accepted and the docket is properly before the body. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernando Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Clerk, for reading that to record. Pretty straightforward. I guess just offering my colleagues time to, I don't see them looking at their green sheets, but offering time for them to read and ask any questions before I ask for a suspended pass. The clerk has already stated what it's for. No? Okay, thank you so much. Can we suspend and pass?
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Counsel Fernando Anderson seeks passage of this docket, docket number zero one zero four. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. We are now on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are four late file matters, two personnel orders and two absence letters. We will now take a vote to add these late file matters onto the record. All those in favor of adding these late file matters onto the record, please say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, these dockets, these matters are added to the record. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the two personnel orders?
First personnel order, late file, Counsel Lujan for Counsel Weber. And second personnel order, late file, Counsel Lujan for Counsel Weber.
Thank you. The Chair moves to passage of these late file personnel orders. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket is passed. These, these personnel orders have passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the two absence letters into the record?
Third late file matter, absence letter from Counselor Gabriela Coletta Zapata. I regret to inform you that I'll be absent from today's council meeting due to health-related reasons. My chief of staff will be listening in and will review the recording. And fourth late file matter, absence letter from Counselor Brian Worell. I regret to inform you that I will be unable to attend today's council meeting. I'm recovering from an illness. Please know my staff will be in attendance, and I will watch the video when it becomes available.
Thank you. These late file matters are added to the record, and we wish our colleagues swift recovery. Okay, we are now, these, these matters will be placed on file. We are now on to announcements. Please remember, these are for upcoming dates and events, so if any of my colleagues have any announcements that they would like to make, now is the time to turn your light on. I'd like to note that the Grenada flag raising is this Friday at noon here, so if you would like to come and, as we raise the Grenada flag. And then Viet Aid on Saturday is having their tet celebration from eleven AM to two PM. Looking at my colleagues, there are no additional announcements. Okay, so we are now moving on to memorials. If anyone would like to adjourn today's meeting on behalf of anyone, I would like to adjourn today's meeting on behalf of someone who we all knew here, Bob Terrell, a long-term Roxbury resident and the executive director of the Office of Fair Housing and Equity, who passed away last week after decades of unwavering support and dedication to fair and affordable housing. He's been here before the city council several times, pushing on issues of how to strengthen that office and make sure that our residents aren't facing discrimination. It was always a joy to work with him and his dedication to our residents in seeking access to housing. He would often stop by the office to share a kind word or looking for timely advice. His leadership span roles at the Boston Housing Authority, at CHAPA, at Action for Equity, at Boston NAACP, and many other local organizations, leaving a powerful legacy of advocacy, mentorship, and community empowerment. We will really miss you, Bob Terrell, and thank you for all that you've given the city of Boston. And I'd also like to adjourn today's meeting on behalf of everyone that we lost on the American Airlines Flight five three four two, including those connected to the Skating Club of Boston, which includes Gina Hahn, Christine Lane, Spencer Land, Evgenia Shishkova, Vadim Nomov, and also Kia Duggins, who was the former president of the Harvard Legal Aid Bureau, where I also worked and studied, and who was so devoted to our residents here in getting legal representation here, and in her work with City Life, Rita Urbana. So I just want to uplift the memory of all of those and everyone who is grieving for those we've lost. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to remember Mary Holman, who was the, a beautiful, kind, and gracious woman who lived in our neighborhood. She was the mother of Counselor Brian J. Holman, a member of this body, who died very suddenly at the age of forty. at the age of forty, 29, 39 years, and that was a huge loss to his mom. And also Representative Kevin Honan, who serves, represents part of my district at the State House. Mrs. Honan was a really incredible woman. She served as a lunch monitor in BPS for 32 years and went to the effort of finding, learning sign language in order to be able to communicate with the students at the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing. She was the center of her, center of the community and the center of her family, and very much loved by, and very active in the Irish, Irish community and a member of the Caro Club. She was just an amazing woman who passed at the age of 91, and we'll all miss her. She's always at everything, you know, when there's the race, the Honan Road Race, she'd be right there at the starting line, she would be at the senior center. And Kevin is a very dedicated son and took care of his mother beautifully, and I think it's just a huge loss for not only the family, but for the community at large, and she will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counsel Braden. When I, when I told Rep. Honan that we would be adjourning today's meeting, in her memory, and you said it, he said, make sure you mention that she was the mother of a great city counselor. So I just wanted to uplift that. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and like Counsel Braden, and you're the council president, I also want to remember Mrs. Honan. I went to the wake last night and said our prayers with Kevin, and he had a wonderful mother, and I know she was an outstanding neighbor to so many, as Counsel Braden has mentioned. I also wanted to remember and recognize Bob Terrell, as you mentioned, Madam President, and what I liked, always respected about Bob is he loved coming down here and engaging us and talking to us, and he was really dedicated to his job, and he took his job very seriously, and that, always, always providing great recommendations to us on how to improve fair housing laws. But he was a tremendous city employee for so many decades, and he'll be missed, he was a wonderful person. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd also like to uplift Mrs. Honan. She was such a wonderful person. As an at-large city councilor, you go to all of the neighborhoods, and anytime, I was in Brighton, and she was there at all of the senior events and other events around the neighborhood, she always had a big smile and was always so welcoming. And her son, Kevin, was such a wonderful son, and anytime I said that to him, he said, well, it's easy, because she's such a wonderful mother. But he would always bring her to the events she wanted to be at, like the breakfast every year, and make sure she got her seat right up front, and she will be missed by so many. So I wanted to uplift that. I also wanted to end, adjourn today in the memory of Mary Costello Fenton, the mother of Eileen Fenton, Billy Fenton, and Margaret Flaherty. She leaves behind a loving family, many grandchildren, children who will miss her dearly.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to, okay, thank you. Today, we will adjourn our meeting on behalf of the following individuals. On behalf of Counsel Braden and the entire City Council, lifelong Alston Brighton resident, Mary Teresa Doyle Honan. On behalf of myself and the entire Boston City Council, Bob, Robert Bob Terrell. On behalf of myself, Marie Corbin, mother of Ann Corbin Fennell. On behalf of Counsel Murphy, Mary Costello Fenton. On behalf of the entire Boston City Council, the lives lost on American Airlines flight 5342. A moment of silence. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in the memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the I and L chamber on Wednesday, February 12th, 2025, at 12:00 noon. Happy Black History Month. Thank you to my colleagues, central staff, the clerk, and the clerk's office, and the council stenographer. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye. The council is adjourned.